Continue with the A Pledge of Allegiance, Trusty Huerta. Can you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, B Meeting Norms. We have in the back of our pictures, meeting norms and meeting guidelines. The adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? C Report of Action Taken in Close Session.
Yes. The governing board voted with a vote of six zero in favor, zero against, and zero abstention to approve a written settlement agreement for the resolution of OAH case number 2025-05-1132. Board member Robinson was absent. Motion made by Correa, seconded by Lujan. The resolution includes educational services fund in total amount not to exceed the dollars of five thousand and attorney fees in the amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred with a total of thirteen thousand five hundred. In exchange for the dismissal of OAH case number 2025-05-1132 with prejudice and a waiver of all educationally related claims to date against the district.
Right, we also have two employee appointments. On a motion by trustee Correa, seconded by trustee Lujan, a vote of six to zero, trustee Robinson absent. The board appointed Tiffany Ayala as the new assistant principal at El Pointe School. Second, on a motion by trustee Correa, seconded by trustee Huerta, on a vote of six zero, the board appointed Jennifer Bundin as the new assistant principal at Alisal High School. Trustee Robinson absent.
Okay, we move on to number four, Student Board Presentations. We have a presentation from Harden Middle School, Eliana Medina, Emily Medina, and David Ortega.
Students find their classes.
During the first week of school, the leadership class hosted a welcome back rally. Huskies were able to earn prizes like HMS Spirit shirts, front of the line passes, and other fun rewards while learning how to be respectful, responsible, and ready to learn.
At start of year, our admin hosts a safety rally. Students learn importance of keeping our school a safe place for students and staff where we can cultivate genius and joy.
Back to School Night. Back to School Night was a success. Families were able to meet the teachers and see all the ways our amazing staff will build upon each Husky's brilliance, creativity, and genius that exists in all students.
Chat and Chill. Responsible students brought time to every class each month earning an extended break and treat. In August, 695 students earned Chat and Chill, and in September, 468 students earned it.
Club Rush. Club Rush took place at the beginning of September. During Club Rush, Huskies are able to join clubs like Somos Be Linguist, Anime Club, Gaming Club, Japan Club, and so many more.
El Grito Festival. El Grito Festival is an annual celebration we host at Harden to celebrate Mexican Independence Day and to kick off Hispanic Heritage Month. We love the opportunity to highlight and honor culture.
Each week, staff nominees nominate students who show outstanding respect, responsibility, and readiness to learn. Each student nominated gets a front of the line pass and a certificate. One hundred and ninety-seven students have been nominated so far this year.
Citizenship Reward. Eight hundred and thirty-five students earned only outstanding and satisfactory citizenship during progress reports. They were rewarded with a free snack at lunch.
Students earn bark books by being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn on campus. Students can purchase items through Husky Mall or teacher stores, the entire school, or teacher raffles.
Husky Readers. Students who complete the spooky reading assignment will earn a free dress day. These four books on screen had to be completed before October 31st in order to earn free dress day. On Fridays, our top reader leaderboard celebrates students with the most minutes read. Huskies earn fun prizes.
We have had so many amazing LTA's this year. Every Friday, ASB hosts different activities for Fun Friday. The most notable LTA so far was our duck cut. Teachers, staff, and admin helped tie ducks around the school for Huskies to find and win prizes.
Mrs. Mendoza and Mrs. Lopez. Ms. Mendoza, our English and Avid teacher, and Mrs. Lopez, our community liaison, truly embodies SUHSD's core values through their constant willingness to support both students, staff, and our community. Their dedication, teamwork, and positive spirit make a difference every day on our campus. We appreciate all that they do.
Leila Ward and Jason Anayew. We wanted to honor Leila and Jason with our student recognition award. They exemplify what it means to be an All-Star Husky and SUHSD student. Leila and Jason are phenomenal web and ASB students. However, more importantly, they show up every day with a positive attitude, encourage those around them, and never shy away from lending a helping hand. You can always count on Leila and Jason, and we appreciate their hard work.
Coming Soon. Some activities coming soon here at Harden Middle School is our second annual Fall Movie Night, where students and families can enjoy a movie under the stars. Our Halloween costume and the reveal for our newly improved gym, which we can't wait to host our next dance in. Our Renaissance Awards that will be distributed to our Husky scholars earning 3.0 GPA or higher. And our eighth grade parent teacher conference night.
And that's it from us.
Thank you.
Okay, so the persons that were nominated, if you could please stay here till the end of this presentation. We're gonna go ahead and give you some presents. So next, we have from Everett Alvarez High School, Alpha Wong and Santiago Ruiz.
Good evening, board members, staff, guests. My name is Alpha Wong. I am a senior here at the Everett Alvarez High School. I am currently served as ASB president.
Hi, my name is Santiago Ruiz. I am a senior also at Everett Alvarez High School, and I serve in the ASB class. Today, we're here to share some recent highlights and achievements from our school.
Starting with Portrait of a Graduate. How do we see the portrait of a graduate at our school? With its early development last school year, we already see the joy and genius at our school. New to our school this year, we have a FFA mentorship program, and we've also had forty students visit Yosemite in our ELD department. And twenty students, including myself, attended the Cal Poly Epic Program this past summer. This program gives students experience of pre-college life and a better understanding of engineering at Cal Poly Slope. We continue to celebrate our community through rallies and cultural events. With academics here at our school, our school is offering more dual enrollment classes. Our students have access to dual enrollment at Hartnell College, Cabrillo College, and MPC. We have seven on-campus dual enrollment classes, including trigonometry, pre-calculus, statistics 1A, 1B, three more coming in spring, and five more additional in the next school year. Our S-Back mathematics scores also increased by three percent. Our counselor, Ms. Adesel Quintas, is the National Avid Counselor of the Year finalist.
Okay, talking a little bit about school culture. Here at Everett Alvarez High School, we promote positive school culture. A new club here at our school called the SOAR Club, standing for Safe, Respectful, and Responsible, in which I am the vice president of. We have implemented a new way of promoting our values with cards that teachers administer to students when seen being safe, respectful, and responsible. These cards can be redeemed at our Eagle Fridays, which occur every two weeks during lunch for prizes. Talking a little bit about social events and spirit activities. So we invited everyone to Back to School Night, where we invited, obviously, parents and students to come meet their teachers and learn more about their courses that they are taking that year. Talking a little bit about our senior exclusive event was our Senior Sunrise, where we had all seniors had the opportunity to enjoy a burning of fun and games to kick off our seniors with great memories. Okay, so talking a little bit about our clubs at Everett Alvarez, we have over sixty-five clubs on campus, varying from academic, social, cultural, and athletic. And we also are very grateful to the Steinbeck Rotary because we do have our Interact Club presenting every month to our Rotary Club. And then, a little bit about athletics. So athletics are a huge part of our school culture and being an Eagle. We take pride in representing our school and giving our all every day, whether it's practice or games. Our fall season has begun, and sports are occurring. And our sports that are occurring are flag football, football, girls tennis, girls golf, water polo, girls volleyball, cross country. Athletics are just getting into Week Six of events, and all teams have had some major victories to look forward to, and we are looking forward to what is coming for the rest of the season. The Athletic Student Council, a new club founded on campus by also me and the athletic director and I, we've been hard at working with five sessions in tackling real student athlete concerns and coming up with collaborative solutions that ensure Everett Alvarez High School is a place to be for athletics in the Salinas Union High School District. One way that we do support our athletes is by recognition. So each week, a new athlete is chosen by their coaches to become the athlete of the week for their determination in their sport.
Now, in the Visual and Performing Arts Department, we have Cheer, Drama, and Ballack Vocal Rico, which recently performed at the Siclovia Salinas event this past Sunday. And all members of the board and guests in the back are welcome to join a play, a musical, in our past ten years. Based on the children's classic storybooks, the Drama Club is hosting a year with Frog and Toad, a family-friendly sweet tale of friendship. Performances will be on December 5th and 6th, and the 12th and the 13th. Friday night shows will begin at 6:00 PM, and Saturday shows will begin at 2:00 PM. Emissions is five dollars per person ages five and up. We are celebrating our thirty years of Everett Alvarez High School. This Friday. This Friday, October 17th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we are hosting our first ever homecoming parade going through Independence. Our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and seniors are hard at work building their floats. Come this Friday to our homecoming parade, and later that day, our homecoming football game against King City. Our homecoming dance at Sherwood Hall will be on this Saturday from 7:00 to 11:00 PM, and the theme is "Howdy, Hoco."
"Howdy, Hoco," if anyone missed that. "Howdy, Hoco," yes.
Now, moving on to our student spotlight. Can we please have Lisandro Marano and Alandra Gomez come up? Lisandro Marano is an exceptional student in his talent and passion for music and have brought warmth and joy to our campus. His presence uplifts those around him, and his true genuine kindness, respectful, and dedication to becoming his best self makes him a great example of Eagle pride. Alandra Gomez is the co-captain of Cheer, an active member of Interact Club, and also the president of NHS Club. She brings enthusiasm and leadership to every space she's in. Her involvement on campus reflects our district's core value of service, integrity, and collaboration. She consistently goes above and beyond to uplift those around her and builds a positive and inclusive school culture.
Now, moving on to our certificated staff spotlight, I would like to invite Ms. Giselle Perez to the podium. Ms. Giselle Perez is an incredible science teacher whose dedication to student success extends far beyond the classroom. As the freshman class advisor and key member of ASB, she played an essential role in organizing our first ever homecoming parade that we hope to see you all at, and supporting students at concessions and events during our games. Ms. Perez exemplifies the SUHSD core values of collaboration, integrity, and student-centeredness through her constant encouragement, teamwork, and unwavering commitment to building a strong school culture. Also, a lot of you might be familiar with him, Dave Boland. He is our classified staff spotlight. I'm sorry. Mr. Dave Boland could not attend today because we had a volleyball game, and someone had to hold it down for us. Ms. Elise had to come with us. Just a little bit of words on Mr. Dave Boland. Mr. Dave Boland is the heart of Everett Alvarez High School. He's a true Eagle through and through. His dedication, knowledge, and willingness to help anyone who walks onto campus makes him an irreplaceable part of our school community. Whether he's supporting students, staff, or school events, Dave brings positivity, pride, and purpose to everything he does. He lives out the SUHSD core values of service, collaboration, and integrity each day, going above and beyond to ensure our campus runs smoothly and our students feel supported. Mr. Dave Boland doesn't just represent Everett Alvarez High School, he is Eagle Nation. I want to say thank you, board members and staff, for your time and continued support of our school. We love to see you at our events, especially our homecoming parade on Friday. Don't forget, 10:00 to 12:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and then showing up to our football game, and go Eagles!
All right, thank you for that. For the ones that got the award, if you can please stay around for photos afterwards. Right now, we are going to ask also from Harden Middle School, Ms. Mendoza, Ms. Lopez, Leila, and Jason, come up front, please. And do we have anyone from Harden Middle School, or can we have the student presenters come up here and recognize them, please?
Yes. So if you will present, okay? You present.
Leila Ward and Jason Anayew. We wanted to honor Leila and Jason with our student recognition award. They exemplify what it means to be an All-Star Husky and SUHSD student. Leila and Jason are phenomenal web and ASB students. However, more importantly, they show up every day with a positive attitude, encourage those around them, and never shy away from lending a helping hand. You can always count on Leila and Jason, and we appreciate their hard work.
Ms. Mendoza, our English and Avid teacher, and Mrs. Lopez, our community liaison, truly embodies SUHSD's core values through their constant willingness to support both students, staff, and our community. Their dedication, teamwork, and positive spirit makes a difference every day on our campus. We appreciate all that they do.
Thank you. Ms. Mendoza, please give me por favor. It's like a dream for me. I can't believe it, and I'm so grateful. And these wonderful students, they are in our school's I council too. I'm very proud of you guys, how you guys represent us. Thank you so much. Thank you, all of you guys.
Ms. Mendoza, do you want to say something? There's a microphone right there.
It's a true honor when I... Mrs. Adessa sent me the email. I mean, I love what I do, and this certificate, it just keeps me more motivated to do what I do every single day. I wake up knowing that I'm headed to my school and doing the best that I can every single day. Thank you.
Now, all the ones that got an award, if you could please step up here with your family members, and we'll take some pictures. So we'll take a little five-minute break here with a quick break in pictures. So we'll take a little five-minute break here with a quick break in pictures.
Cutting it out, too.
Do you want one, Albert?
What do you have on that?
Mrs. Mendoza, do you wanna say something?
There's a microphone right there.
It's a true honor when I... Mrs. Adessa sent me the email. I mean, I love what I do, and this certificate, it just keeps me more motivated to do what I do every single day. I wake up knowing that I'm headed to my school and doing the best that I can every single
Now, all the ones that got an award, if you could please step up here with your family members, and we'll take some pictures. So we'll take a little five-minute break here with a quick break in pictures.
Cutting it out, too.
I know, we just got it. I was gonna have to...
Everyone, be convenient, I'll tell them about the whole thing.
Okay, let's go.
Dr. Pepper, because if you hear, we're trying to cancel the training.
They completely say, we're gonna pull out the schedule if we don't cancel.
How are you?
They just started.
They just started.
They're like, they're like sixteen.
Okay, we gotta mix it.
Okay, another minute or two to wind down.
Hey, we got something for you. Did he tell you?
No, no, it's a surprise.
Oh, it's a surprise. So just sit... Yeah, just, okay. Be ready, be ready. You want your mom and dad to come up with you? Say, can we have Mr.... Yeah, that's cute, huh? We have something for their son. Say please, we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you part of this group?
Okay, cool.
That was really good.
Hello, hello, hello. Hello, hello. Okay, we are going to go ahead and resume our session. Everyone, can we please take our seats? Okay, now, getting back to business. To help celebrate Everett Alvarez High School, we have a surprise for them. The surprise is their 30th year anniversary. Dr. Galván came upon a picture frame. This picture frame actually has the original signature of Mr. Everett Alvarez on this antique photo, so we want to present this to Mr. Gompf. If you could come, please, and receive this award. And you're happy to bring your parents as well and your team.
Your mom in town. Wow. Ah. Oh, how do you? Shake, shake.
Oh, sorry, my apologies. We're gonna find a place to put this.
It's microphones.
Oh, that's awesome.
They're in here, off. Miguel, that microphone right there. Oh, okay. So, on behalf of, as we like to say, the Everett Alvarez, and I am a super proud principal of that beloved school, we want to thank you for this. I'm sure this is probably hard to come by, so the fact that we have this now, a signed copy, original copy, signed by Everett Alvarez Jr., we had a... We were fortunate enough to meet him in person at the airshow that just happened. Wonderful, wonderful person, beautiful wife, Ms. Peggy, she shared stories with us, and we're just transcendent of who they are as a family and everything they've done for the community. So, we will find a cherished location, put this out on our school site. There's a grand new performing arts center being built, one of them, but thank you very much. We will graciously accept this on behalf of Everett Alvarez High School.
Now, we move on to number five presentations. A, Dr. Goldie Muhammad's Five Pursuits: A Portrait of a Graduate and the Impact in Our Classrooms.
Yes. That's my class. Oh, really? No way.
Okay, so, I am excited to share that five of our students who are part of our panel and introduction to Dr. Goldie Muhammad on July 31st have been invited on an all-expense paid trip to Philadelphia in January. Woo! To serve the... Do we all... I know, I usually ask these.
No, I don't think it's on the chat on? I don't see it. Is it?
Oh, okay. Um, to serve as panelists discussing culturally relevant and sustaining education alongside Dr. Muhammad. Goldie was so impressed by the work that the students were doing in the classroom and in the community. Through this opportunity, our students will be sharing their perspectives and learning experiences with educators and thought leaders from across the country. Today, she had a presentation in over seventeen hundred teachers and leaders online across the United States. This is a tremendous honor and opportunity for them to contribute to important conversations about educational equity and culturally responsive practices and what learning could look like. I am truly grateful for the opportunity to learn from Dr. Goldie Muhammad, and I know that there are many other educators in our district who know who she is and echo the same sentiment. It's not every day that you get to learn from one of the nation's top 1% educators in the country. I was first introduced to Dr. Goldie Muhammad's work in 2020. I even brought Mr. Hinton, my former principal, a copy of her book so that he would be able to understand the changes that I would be making in the classroom. And at that time, I was also collaborating with educators throughout the country, learning how to implement the pursuits: identity, skills, intellect, criticality, and, most importantly, joy. Some of my students are here tonight to not only share their learning experiences with the pursuits, but also how they feel the pursuits connect with the portrait of a graduate. Now, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm very transparent. I think the portrait of a graduate is a great starting place for all of us, but my students all know I have much higher expectations for what I want for them in the future. We truly have the best students in the district. I was so fortunate to be able to share space with our students from Alisal, our students from Alvarez, and they are always what's right. I have to brag, though, about these babies up here and some of my babies that are at home that they are representing. Last year, we signed up to pilot an APW Service Learning Program that's new that College Board just started. I believe we were the first in the county to pilot this opportunity. You're only hearing from five students tonight, but we had over a hundred students earn APW Service Learning Distinction. And I believe we were the... There's about eighty-five of those students who also earned the Seal of Civic Engagement, so next year's numbers are gonna be much higher. So while you're gonna hear from five of them tonight, know that there are students at home that did projects on science, on math. All of their projects were geared toward improving education in this community. And all of them have phenomenal blogs. I'm always gonna plug their blogs, I'm like their little teacher manager. Writingtransforms@wordpress.com, you can click on that link right there. And when you see the out-of-state paperwork for our field trip, just go ahead and expedite that and just pass that. Now, the good news is, all y'all have to do is pay for it stuff for me for one day. Other than that, Dr. Goldie Muhammad has put in the bill for our air flight, our hotels, and all of our services. We're just gonna give you a little bit of a preview of some of the things that they... that she was impressed by.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community. My name is Yshana Patel, and I'm a senior at Rancho San Juan High School, and I'm honored to be here tonight to share how the Salinas Union High School District Portrait of a Graduate has shaped my experience as a student and continues to guide my vision for the future. Throughout my journey in this district, I've seen how each quality, from communication to emotional intelligence, prepares students like me to turn learning into action and purpose. This past July, I had the privilege of serving as the student announcer for a district event where I announced Dr. Goldie Muhammad, a woman of color whose work on pursuits deeply moved me. Dr. Muhammad speaks about learning that is rooted in identity, intellect, and joy, a framework that feels more than curriculum, but a philosophy that we should all live by. Hearing her words inspired me to live more intentionally, to pursue knowledge that reflects who I am and to nurture purpose in everything I do, especially as I prepare for college. Before meeting Dr. Muhammad, I had already started exploring my identity and voice through my professional blog, Roots and Attributes on WordPress. Writing became my way of embracing culture and creativity, and that blog actually became my catalyst for Dr. Muhammad's work. It gave me the courage to share aspects of my Indian-American heritage, and, in many ways, that process embodied what it means to be both culturally competent and empowered, learning not just for achievement, but for meaning. Since ninth grade, I've also been a part of the Buente program at Rancho, which I'm now the president of. Buente has helped me grow as a critical thinker and collaborative problem solver. From freshman year to junior year, we set measurable goals and recorded video reflections to recap our progress every month. We would create a slideshow and reflect on what goals we accomplished, what positive things we experienced, and what we learned inside and outside of the classroom. We did this from August to May, and we were all given the opportunity to look forward to making these videos and editing them, because it allowed me and my peers to channel our creativity. That same creativity inspired me to launch a YouTube channel where I could merge creativity and accountability. The Portrait of a Graduate is more than a framework and reminds us that education is not only about academics, but about identity, purpose, and connection, similar to Dr. Goldie's vision. Thank you for your time and for continuing to invest in the future of students like me, and I'm excited that more students will have access to experiences and opportunities pioneered by our district. Now, I would like to introduce a trailblazer who is able to amplify representation within my community. Please give it up for my fellow trailblazer, Yunice.
Good evening, SUHSD board members, superintendent, and community. My name is Yunice Caigas, and I am a senior at Rancho San Juan High School and a proud Filipino-American, but I am also a victim of subtractive schooling. Perhaps it is simple for those who have never had their culture buried under the piled pages of privilege and their native tongue caught by the clause of prejudice to say, "I know who I am." My journey of unearthing my identity was not any easy slope, and I did tell this in my blog, Ace of Aspiration, on wordpress.com, but as... But as I learned about Dr. Goldie's Five Pursuits of Education, I began to verbalize and pinpoint the hurt and discomfort that came from this exclusion, the lack of joy that our students face every day at school. I was surprised to learn that Dr. Goldie Muhammad's culturally and historically responsive education model has been adopted in our district. I know that her work is renowned and is popular in thousands of US schools and districts and even internationally. Personally, I see her work reflected in my own learning experience. In cultivating genius, she shares her insight and research on the pursuit of intellect. This pillar is a... This is a pillar that shines bright in our own literary society, Miss Henry's classroom. Our class discussions brought forth questions and issues that stemmed from books that we read. For example, through 1984 by George Orwell and The Smartest Kids in the World by Amanda Ripley, we critically explored questions such as, "What is your truth?" "What does it mean to be free?" "What does it mean to be educated?" We connected each of our life experiences to concepts, and as we unpacked and explored each idea, we created solutions and became more enlightened about our community and each other. I was able to apply my intellect, my knowledge, from our class discussions into my service learning project, which highlighted the importance of diversity throughout our curriculum. Many minority children may feel excluded or forgotten when it comes to finding a role model, as I did growing up as a Filipino-American. In an Instagram reel that I developed, which can be found on the district's Instagram page, I highlighted the effects of a lack of diversity in our curriculum and what educators can do to combat this. To further my impact, I created daily advisory slides, which highlighted various Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander figures for teachers to present in the month of May. By making sure my peers were seen and valued, I was able to challenge stereotype bias and create a space within my school of joy and love and with the hopes of inspiring student self-efficacy. Thank you. And then, I have my APW testimony right here, so you guys can get a taste of my project. Hello, my name is Yunice from Rancho San Juan High School, and this is my APW research project. For my project, I wanted to highlight the lack of diversity in our curriculum. It's not like that. Whether it's you, or someone, or only the people around that you know or share with. I feel like I can never see myself or any other minority in my classes, and especially this. And I share the perspectives we released to the perspectives and stories from people that share the culture and the culture of Spanish, and even their own. Because of this lack of diversity in our curriculum, I know these lack of figures to look up to and it makes it hard for these groups to strive for this major achievement. And in terms of combating this issue of the lack of diversity in our curriculum, I created an Instagram reel for teachers and board members to understand the importance of diversity in our curriculum and what effects does a lack of diversity have on our students. And this had a concept of the stereotype. The reasons I created to make this reel, which I can't pronounce, is toxic and a manner of the smartest kid in the world and how we got there. By creating this reel, I hope to reach as many teachers and board members as I can to create change. And luckily, by AP Language and Composition, teacher Miss Henry was able to send this reel to the district's PR commissioner to post this reel on their Instagram. In addition to posting my reel, the PR commissioner also interviewed me about my life and my experiences as a Filipino-American in the Salinas Union High School district in honor of a NAACP. And in honor of Asian-American, Native-Hawaiian, and Pacific-Islander, I created advisory slides that are full of Asian-American, Native-Hawaiian, and Pacific-Islander figures that may have not been seen before or wished out in our history books when contributions shouldn't have been. I also included the experiences that Asian-American, Native-Hawaiian, and Pacific-Islander people that go through on a daily, in hopes that the students that are of these ethnicities still relate to them and empathize with them to create connections between communities. I was able to post these slides to all the teachers at our school in hopes that they show them to their kids in their classrooms. And finally, throughout the months of April, May, I performed many traditional dances with our students, when I perform, I feel most kind to my children, because I'm in the traditional attire and I'm performing a story in the way that my ancestors did. In my performance, I hope to share my beautiful journey with all of my school in hopes that maybe one Filipino girl can see themselves in me. Thank you for watching, my APW user. I'm a special one. I would now like to introduce one of my fellow classmates, who created many opportunities for his homies and underrepresented students at Rancho. Please give it up for my classmate, Ricardo.
This is just a fraction of my support teams, my homies. Hello, my name is Ricardo Garcia. I had the opportunity through College Board to pilot a service learning opportunity called APW. The topic for AP Language and Composition that we were assigned was education, and my goal was to turn over a new leaf inspired by the research of Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade and the book, The Smartest Kids in the World. What I grasped from Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade is that it is critical to be empathetic to students, to be equitable, and to meet the needs of students, and that educators should be doing more to establish a relationship between themselves and their students. From The Smartest Kids in the World, I took away the idea of the peer effect, which is to influence the influence that peers have on each other to influence a positive academic outcome, and this is what I wanted for my homies. And one issue that had to be addressed is that my homies are marginalized, and if you look like us, walk like us, talk like us, and live where we live, you will be judged and not in a positive light. The majority of Salinas's population is Latino and the minority of Latinos... And if you look like us, walk like us, talk like us, and live where we live, you will be judged and not in a positive light. The majority of Salinas's population is Latino, and the minority of Latino youth in Salinas battle many issues every day concerning the lack of diversity and representation, the lack of support or strong foundation for growth, the lack of joy in a classroom. I felt the need to share my experience and joy in a school by magnifying that to my peers and my homies. I wanted to put the spotlight on their genius and so they can see their genius and blossom. And I wanted to unearth joy in education. How I think Dr. Goldie Mohammed would put it, each and every one of us in Salinas have our own genius that can be revealed in her many pursuits of identity. Skills, intellectualism, criticality, joy. And my goal was to bring them together through literature, because the truth is, we like to read. I started a book club with the homies, The Homies Get Lit, and we got lit and read Solito by Javier Zamora. Not only that, but we dedicated time to work on our community service together. We mentored elementary and middle school youth and helped out a local church by our school, which I'm very proud of. This year, me and my homies are taking challenging courses, such as AP Lit and AP Stats, because we do math too. I'm sure we may struggle, and it does not feel good to struggle, but we have a true support system, and we help each other because that's what homies do. The Salinas spirit is more than just another echo. We're a liberating drum in these valleys. There is treasure and genius all over Salinas, and my homies prove this every day. And then here is a video about my service learning project to the right. In Salinas, I noticed that there is a lack of focus on marginalized students. And marginalization is a problem that I can recognize as a student. The problem is many of our Latino youth has become let down due to the lack of support within our community. Students aren't seen as a boss class instead of students in need. And from the book, Smartest Kids in the World, I personally thought of the peer effects and how peer influence in your environment can shape our students. Then I thought this would be a great opportunity to start a book club and bring a community together academically. However, what I gathered from Jeff Duncan Andrade is that in order to make a true difference in education, you must establish yourself to appeal to students, make women engaging, and try to establish relationships between students and education. The first element of my project would be the literacy club. For this, I organized this club with my teacher, Miss Henry's room, and in some ways, I put this club was through social media and my Google Passion. Out of my list of books, I ended up making the book Solito, A Memoir of a Boy Who Migrates at an Early Age When His Life to Reunite With His Family. I bought snacks and we read during multiple days after school on a shared PDF in the Google Passion, where we discussed and shared memories that we had connected to the book. Overall, we had a great time, and I felt that my community was established. Another element to my project was recruiting youth in middle school to join my RSJ Christian Club at my high school, which we had sixteen new signups. Here is me and my peer welcoming students to join. Overall, I believe that this was a fun way to extend out to my youth and community. With my peers, we also serve community service here in our own church, where we are mostly organized. This was the best way to show the true representation of my community and my peers. I wanted to show the influence that students have and that students are more willingly to be involved than people think themselves. And this was my project. Thank you, guys.
I would now like to introduce our final student speaker. Luz Salvador Nester is a senior from Rancho San Juan High School, and she is known on our campus for being an advocate for English learner students. Luz has a blog on WordPress called Equity Writings, and her junior year, she earned the AP Wee distinction for service learning, as well as the Seal of Civic Engagement for a project she led, where she strived to normalize language learning for students, educators, and families. Please welcome my fellow trailblazer, Luz Salvador Nester.
Hello, everyone and board members. I am Luz Valenz Salvador Nester, a student from Rancho San Juan. As an Indigenous mystic student, I faced struggles such as being excluded from classmates, courses, opportunities, and myself. My language was not seen, Spanish or Mixteco. While others got more information about higher-level classes, scholarships, and college opportunities, I was stuck in an ELD class where most of the time, we did the bare minimum. Hatching reports state sixty-eight percent of ELD students earn their high school diploma. But after high school, what opportunities do we really have? Tracking students and segregating them since an early grade is not the best way to fix what is known as problem. It's including us in activities, helping us envision our future, and exposes to more than what we know. Encouraging us to develop goals, teaching us about our identities, exposing us to trailblazers who we can connect with culturally and morally. It is about giving us hope. We are more than fields, we are more than labor, we are geniuses. A curriculum that can help us find our passion is what is needed. As an ELD student myself, I had to fight for my spot in AP classes. I am now taking AP courses. Not only did I pass the AP Language and Composition exam, but I was able to engage in service learning where I applied my knowledge from the books and research I read to impact change in my community. I did my project on support and resources we should provide for language learners in our district. Also, I started a blog, Equity Writings, on WordPress, where I could share my educational journey and advocate for issues I am passionate about. So I know firsthand that students like me, a language learner and a scholar, can succeed academically. My mentor, Miss Henry, has helped me find my passion, be a goal-oriented person, and I started seeing myself not only at a university, but thriving there. I plan to attend a UC or a private university. And I know that those are both viable options for me. I just want my peers, who may be migrant students and/or language learners, to believe that they too have the same opportunities. We need teachers that believe in us and help us get out of the repeating cycle, the same cycle poverty that is called going straight into workforce right after high school. We are bilingual, and we are geniuses too.
Do you have any comments? Do you have any comments? Any board member has any comments?
I just wanted to say that you impress me. We're so proud of you. And elevating your voice, the way you do, even all the struggles, means so much. I mean, that's brave of you, and I hope that you influence all the other kids around you.
Thank you.
I don't know about everyone else, but I feel like I just listened to four drafts of masters thesis projects. I feel like I have to identify and affirm for you all, this is a process that I don't know many adults who go through, right? That you can reflect, you can research, you can apply best practices in the field, expertise to a solution, and you can create it and act on it, and then report back your findings? It's an inquiry cycle, that's your thesis, that's your doctorate. These are things you powerfully can do amazing things with after high school, right? And some of the quotes a lot of you said in your, I just wrote down, "More than curriculum, learning not just for achievement, but for me", "Lack of joy that we face in our classroom every day", "Struggling to find a role model that looks like me", "The lack of joy in the classroom", "Truth is, we like to read and we do math too", "Stuck in ELD doing the bare minimum", "We're more than fields", like, I didn't hear any of you guys asking for more, like, "Step up to writing, no offense, Dr. Galván, it's a great program", or "More science of reading", it was to believe in me, to see me, and not come into the room and think you know what I need, but like, "Give me what I need to do what I want", because you guys know what you want, and we're the experts in the room, right? Who hold the key, it's really powerful. We have to be careful with it, not to gatekeep it, right? To pass it over, and really to just facilitate you on your pathway. So obviously commend Professor Henry, right? Because she's not just Mrs. Henry, she's also a professor in a master's program. She is TMD, so she really knows what you're talking about. When it comes to pedagogy and research, and man, just kudos to all of you guys. Thank you for inspiring not only me, but the youth. And Ricardo, I have to officially and formally extend the invite, because I've been saying it everywhere, I teach sixth grade at Cameron, those are your future homies. Right? They're the future homies, I need that infectious influence, because it's only one Miss Robinson in the room, but we have to partner. And all of you, you want to come share out your message, right? This is service learning into action with the youth. This is how I got involved in many of the things I was doing was community organizing. It can happen outside of your classrooms. It doesn't just have to happen with your mentors or in academic settings, but I'm proud to be one of the leaders that helps you all do this, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, now we want to be the superintendent, student advisory council, the leadership of our empowerment learners in SUHSD.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are going to be presenting about our superintendent student advisory council.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys are all having an incredible evening with all of the incredible presentations earlier. I am one of your presenters tonight. My name is Lali Solis, I am a junior at ALSA High School.
My name is Nayla Gil Solva, and I am a senior at ALSA High School.
My name is Mesli Huerta, and I'm an eighth grader at ASAL Middle School.
Hi, my name's Jimena Gil Santana. I'm an eighth grader at Washington Middle School.
And we are your presenters for tonight.
Tonight, we will share how our superintendent advisory provides district leadership, celebrates our learners, and empowers our voices.
So here at our superintendent student advisory council, we welcome all of our schools. So we welcome all of our high schools and all of our middle schools. Last year, I was part of this council, and we had thirty student representatives, and this year, we have increased by a significant amount of students, and we have ninety-five student representatives, which is great.
Our mission statement is the Salinas Union High School District will ignite passion and purpose in every learner to thrive personally, contribute meaningfully, and create a just and equitable world. Our mission statement is that the Salinas Union High School District will empower every student to be lifelong learners and flourishing leaders within their communities and through equitable, inclusive, student-centered, and learner-driven environments. Here are a couple of our core values, with our first one being belonging and community. Our second one, growth and learning. Third one, integrity and respect. And finally, kindness and patience.
Our student advisory's mission statement, which is written by us, created by us, that Salinas Union High School District Superintendent's Advisory Council is a group of strong, bold, young leaders who are the eyes, ears, and voice of all the schools.
At the Superintendent Student Advisory Council's monthly meetings, we discuss what our district does well, what we can do better, and what we can improve on together. Tonight, we will share how we were empowered at our district opening on July 31st and our State of the District address on October 9th.
So at our State of the Union address, we gave out these amazing pamphlets, which gave our annual reports of the 2024 to 2025 school year, with amazing statistics and amazing pictures and everything. And then we also, on July 31st, we went to go see Dr. Mohammed's Five Pursuits, which aligns with our Portrait of a Graduate.
If you are wondering how you can support us, you can actually join us at our next meeting, which is October 21st at 6:00 PM in this room. Also, parents, if you guys are interested, Dr. Galván has a new event called Cafe Ichadla, which is held on every last Friday of the month. And now, we are going to be talking a bit of our experience through either Portrait of a Graduate or the Student Advisory Council.
Hello, everyone. It's such a pleasure to be able to speak here today. My name is Jimena Gil Santana, and I'm so grateful to be talking about my favorite event that took place a few months ago. It's amazing what we have been able to accomplish this year, and it's incredible how much work, time, and effort has been put into all the events that have taken place throughout the year. Even though we have done several memorable events, my favorite one has been the Salinas Union High School District kickoff back in July. It was very notable for me since it gave not only high school students, but also middle school students, a chance to speak their minds and really share their views and give their feedback to the teachers and staff that attended. It was also phenomenal to be able to hear a keynote speaker, Goldie Mohammed, who actually kept the audience engaged throughout her presentation. Something that really stood out about her was how passionate she sounded about everything she spoke about. You could really tell it was important to her. I think that is something very important to convey in your presentations, especially when your audience has a lot of students who are panelists in the event and are most likely going to have the chances for public speaking in the future. I had so much fun that day, being able to share my thoughts and ideas with everyone there. I felt very heard, and it was great to be able to express what I believe with such great people who wanted to know what I had to say. I think that was super important and really set this event apart because it helps students feel seen and heard. I was given the chance to be a student panelist, and thanks to that, I have the privilege to be a part of the SUHSD Student Advisory Board. I definitely think it's something we should always continue because our future students will also become our future leaders. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mesli Huerta, and I'm an eighth grader at ASAL Middle School. First things first, thank you, Dr. Galván and the rest of the board members for giving me the platform to share my voice with everyone. That being said, the Portrait of a Graduate carries so much meaning to me. I want to be an unstoppable force in life, and the first step is conquering middle school, high school, and then college. So I'm using my emotional intelligence to make meaningful connections with my peers. I'm analyzing texts, learning goals, and questions in all my classes, and of course, I am collaborating with others to solve problems, come up with ideas, and make decisions in A's and B's. Portrait of a Graduate means so much to me because it is not solely an individual endeavor, it is an endeavor that will take me and the rest of the students who are striving towards greatness. I'm honored to be selected tonight as what is deemed an appropriate representation of Portrait of a Graduate. Thank you.
This year, the Superintendent Student Advisory Board has made an incredible impact on our district, not just through changes we've made, but through the connections we've built. What truly sets our board apart is the leadership and support from our superintendent. She is one of the most outgoing and approachable leaders I've ever met. She doesn't just lead from her office, she makes it a point to talk with students, to really get to know us, and most importantly, to listen. When we bring up concerns or ideas, she doesn't just hear them, she acts on them. That's what has made the Student Advisory Board so successful this year. We've seen real progress because our voices matter, and our superintendent has shown us that student input can shape meaningful change. One great example of this was last year's project, when the Advisory Board completely redesigned and revamped the district's logo. It wasn't just about creating a new image, it was about creating a new identity, one that represents who we are now and where we're headed. that represents who we are now and where we're headed. That logo stands as a symbol of growth, collaboration, and the power of student leadership. The Superintendent Student Advisory Board is proof that when students are given a seat at the table and when leaders genuinely value our voices, real progress happens. Together, we're helping shape a district that listens, adapts, and continues to move forward for the better. Thank you.
My name is Nayala Gil Silva and I am a senior at Alasa High School. Last year, Dr. Galván proposed the idea of starting a student advisory program, and I knew right away I wanted to join it. This council has given students across our district a voice. It is a space where we can share our thoughts, express our concerns, and help shape the future of our school. Over the past year, we've worked together to strengthen our district's identity through branding and unity, bringing all our schools together under one vision and one goal. It's been inspiring to see how collaboration between students and district leaders can make a real difference. This is the first time I have experienced something like this, and honestly, it's been one of my best experiences of my high school journey. What makes this council so special is that it is completely for the students. We are here to represent our classmates, our schools, and our community. We get to speak about what matters to us, whether that is improving school culture, increasing student involvement, or finding new ways to support each other across campuses. It's a reminder that our voices hold power, and when we use them together, we can truly make a difference. It has been amazing to meet and collaborate with other student leaders across our district. We have learned so much from each other by sharing our ideas and found that even though each school has its own unique culture, we all want the same thing, to make our district the best it can be, which it is. Being part of this group has helped me grow as a leader and a person. It is an honor to stand here and represent our students, our goals, and our needs. On behalf of all the students in the council, I want to thank Dr. Galván for her leadership and for reminding us that our voices matter. Together, we're building a stronger, more connected district community. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Let's continue to elevate our voices and make this twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year to remember. Any questions?
Question? Tracy Robinson?
I have a question. A lot of you echoed the same thing about feeling maybe for the first time that what you were saying mattered. Like, Jimena, you crack me up every time you say, being in a room full of people who actually cared what I was saying, because I know like you're a public speaker, you've got a lot of ideas. How did being on the council and maybe seeing some of those ideas actually come to life change what you were thinking you might want to do after high school? Maybe the high schoolers have had a shift in vision or middle schoolers now you can plan a little further out?
I think it is really cool to see how Dr. Galván was able to see how the students could use their voices to really help the district and like teachers and staff and really like open up this space where we could share ideas.
Anyone else? Anything change about what you thought you might be doing after this year or high school?
Well, I like that. Obviously, this is for the students. So when we're given input, obviously, the change can be, obviously helps the students. So honest, it's more, it works better just because obviously if we see change and we address the change, then change is going to happen, so.
Did your experience change what maybe you thought you wanted to do after high school or what you could do like in your community? Does it transcend just the council here in high school? Like, did it make you think of, wow, city council now, or wow, this is how we persuade adults to maybe listen to us?
For me, I really like being heard and kind of like my, what I, my opinions and my values kind of being changed. So in the future, I do want to go into something with law, so maybe city council.
You say louder, Lolly. You're whispering.
To make sure that everyone's voices are heard, so I want to advocate for others, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation, ladies.
I'll speak on that, too. Before, I kind of want to, I wanted something not really to do with any of this stuff, but like, but now I actually, like, I'm actually interested in it, so I will like definitely be interested in something. Because I know it's not like a full-time job, at least like city council and stuff. Well, some of us, right?
I don't know. You can make it whatever you want. But I love that you particularly say that because I feel like even last year and every time you show up, you're exactly who you are, Nayala. And like your leadership's just becoming more confident, but you're not really changing like your personality or who you are. And I love that because I think that inspires like girls coming in behind you, too. Like, like you said, maybe this wasn't my space, but I'm pretty good at it. So here I am, so congratulations, ladies.
Well, before I did the council and everything and coming here, so before I came here, I didn't think I wanted to do much, maybe just go to a college like Hartnell or something. But then, just the fact that like knowing that my voice is heard and that it's like a good one.
You've got a good idea.
That, like, it matters a lot more than I thought it did. So I would say it helped really like open my eyes to everything else I can do.
And that we should keep listening, right? Right, ladies? All of us, we should keep listening?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you because I know this is a lot more on your schedules. I know you're all busy, whether athletes and other activities. So I thank you for taking the time to be on the council and sharing your experience with us because that's, that's always been, I think, our goal is making sure that the the student's voice is at the table with every decisions that we make. And so I really appreciate you sharing everything that you shared with us today. Thank you.
And thank you all for having us and all the opportunities.
Right, thank you.
I just want to add one more thing, ladies. Based on the conversation that we had, we had a conversation with the Chamber of Commerce. And those that work within the city of Salinas are curious at the brilliance and the geniuses that our students possess. So next week, we have our second council meeting for the year. And next week on Tuesday, the twenty-first, we'd love to invite our board members to join us. There will be a chamber mixer right after our meeting where chamber representatives in the city of Salinas want to meet our students. And so they want to see who's going off to college that are going to hopefully come back and work for them or that are entering the workforce. So we're really excited to put it right into action.
Okay, next we want to see prioritize and anti-racism in the hate speech protocol vision for SUHSD.
Tonight marks an important milestone for our collective commitment to ensuring that every student and staff member feels safe, seen, and supported on our campuses. The hate speech policy amendment before you for adoption will actually for first read in adoption is the result of deep collaboration shaped by the voices, passion, and persistence of our students, staff, and community partners. We're proud to introduce representatives from our schools, community organizations, and district teams who have lent their words, experiences, and actions to this work. Together, they have helped transform lived experiences into potential policy, ensuring our campuses stand firmly against hate and for belonging. And so I'd like to introduce our crew by starting off myself. I am Tameisha Allen Smith, and I serve as this year a math teacher, math eighth grader at Harden Middle School, as well as the Jedi Coordinator.
I'm 辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了辛苦了 Part of the presentation team for tonight is myself, your superintendent, Dr. Galván.
My name is Lily Lapam and I'm a senior at Salinas High School.
Hi, my name is Soraya Molina. I'm also a senior at Salinas High School.
Mary White, I'm the principal of North Salinas High School.
Sharon Smith, community partner, New Hope Baptist Church. And I also want to introduce Alyssa. Alyssa, you should come up here because Alyssa served on one of the panels, the student panels.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Brown and I'm a senior at Salinas High School.
Pastor Smith, also a community advisor, New Hope Baptist Church.
Karissa Purnell, I'm the director of health, wellness, and community here at the district.
And so you are going to hear from everybody here standing in front of you because all of the work has been done as a committee. And we would like to share our POV from different places and we're going to ask Dr. Purnell to get us.
All right, so I've got the timeline. Can you guys hear me? I feel like, okay, barely. Huge voice, okay, huge voice. I've got the privilege of sharing the timeline, so when I was asked to share it, I was a little hesitant because if you look at the timeline, it goes back a bit. As a district, we kind of took a formal initiative with this in twenty twenty following the Black Lives Matter movement. We established the advisory committee, we did a resolution. But I think it's important to acknowledge the context, right? So this is reactionary based on the murder of George Floyd in twenty twenty. This is social unrest that's not just centuries, but generations and centuries old that's tied to slavery and pain and violence and hurt. So this is something that's been long coming and rooted to history that's, it's painful. So I'm glad that we're doing the work, but it's important to say their names, too. So I want to acknowledge Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, Michael Brown, Eric Garner, Trayvon Martin, Sandra Bland, Oscar Grant. We're always going to lift up their names because they're the ones who moved this work forward. I came in when this work started happening after the Doll incident, which is on there for a reason. I think it's important to acknowledge we've been encouraged to put that behind us, but we're not going to. I think we carry our past with us for a reason, and it's a heavy one, and it's one that we're carrying with us along the way. We don't have to forget because we're not ever going to forget because we're going to carry it with us. I think this work also is not just tied to race, is not just tied to identity, but really the expression into where students choose to be. So I know that we have our LGB two plus task force that we're super proud of. They do the conference every year. We acknowledge Junos Pride Month, so we're thankful for the board to take those formal resolutions to recognize our students and student voice. We brought in Brandon Brown with the intention of doing this really great extracurricular activity, doing theatrics and plays and bringing in music. But it's also important to acknowledge that during one of those ceremonies, one of the students actually took over the projector and in the session about the history of the N-word, about the history of slavery, actually projected an image of a monkey in the middle of the entire student body. So we talk about how we do the work and for every step we take forward, there are constantly steps backwards. So it's important to acknowledge kind of the ebb and flow of this work. We brought on the anti-racist coalition team with Ketsal. And again, it's one of those things where we took this huge step forward, we invested in a consultant, and it didn't work out, and we're being transparent about that. There are staff that are frustrated and tired because we've sat in so many meetings. I've written on so many posted notes and written on so many poster papers, our feelings, our thoughts, and our frustrations, but this is why this night is so important is because there's a policy in front of you that all of us stand up here and we're super proud to be a part of and have a voice in it. Dr. Diaz-Garcia and Ms. Tameisha Allen Smith and their student advisory council has been amazing. They're at every single school site. They've started these great campaigns, the hate speech campaign, the work that they're doing, the dehumanizing student language sessions. They've pushed into P U S classes, they're tier one, two, and three. They brought on board Nicole Anderson. They've done some amazing work, and I think a lot of the folks up here who are not district employees, but members of the community have stood here in frustration and been humble throughout the process. So I'm glad and proud to stand up here. So we acknowledge that they came to the board meetings. We acknowledge that we've said our truths, but I think that last image is really important because we're here today. We have some tangible things that we'd like to move forward. So I just wanted to acknowledge that this has not been a clean process, and even as a team, we've had some courageous conversations amongst ourselves, but we realize that this is the good thing and the right thing to do.
Thank you. So it has been an honor and a privilege to serve on the community engagement forum. And as part of the original African-American advisory community, we are thankful that, you know, Nicole Anderson was brought on. And in these five forums that you see up there on the screen, the first one, hearing the truth and how that really transformed the beginning of our learning sessions and then going from there to understanding the impact, you know, what is, what is really the impact on our students across the board, not just on African-American students, but all students? And just hearing students, and I think that's where we had our first student panel, which was really showing how families are harmed, you know, by this, by this N-word. And then action over words, you know, policy, accountability, and real change. You know, once again, the hard work that's been put into this process, it is not over, you know, it's not done, there's still a whole lot more work to do, but we're making, we're making clear, clear steps, and we're really excited about that. And then empowering black voices, you know, a sustainable system, you know, that is created for black students, parents, and community members to have an active role in shaping the culture in which the students are actually a part of. And then from conversation to commitment, we have to go beyond just talking about it and actually putting those things into practice. And so we're really excited about, you know, where this process has taken us. We have a concrete action plan with measurable goals that's going to allow us to see, you know, and hold the district accountable to the structure and then finalize. And then this will be an ongoing process for generations to come. And so we're excited about our community engagement forums. Thank you.
So I guess I represent the site level and all of my colleagues, principals, assistant principals, our teams at the site level. While this hard, very hard work of developing a hate speech policy and really shifting our mindsets around the way we interact with each other, I think at the site level, it's the real work. Because while we're waiting to get that policy approved, we can't stop the work. And it really is work rooted in conversation, rooted in dialogue with each other, with our parents, with our students, with our teachers. And I can genuinely, I can say that I see the mind shift and the willingness to engage in dialogue, and that comes by the hard work of this group.
And that's just the list of all, not just the list, that is the list of the many people who have put their brainpower, heart, and passion behind this work.
So at Salinas High School specifically, our club, the Cultural Awareness Club, was started after the Doll incident, and that happened a year before we came in. And then when I came in freshman year, the star was very open still. I heard everything about it and our club kind of centered around it. And now, as we're still carrying on with that still part of us, we have expanded our club to kind of focus on being a center for safety and inclusion for all students, no matter their background. And we do that through educational activities and lessons. That way, we promote community bonding while also weeding in lessons of understanding and empathy. And more about the Doll incident there. Okay, so part of the work that we So part of the work that we do is through surveys, similar to this one that was taken in 2023, of students throughout the district. And in these results, we found that 88% of the students that responded heard the N-word at least once a day. And around half of them heard the N-word five or more times per day. And 37% of our students have been called to the N-word directly. So these statistics really show just how dire this issue is within our community. And our school should be a place of safety and where we come to learn and expand our minds. And instead, people have to be dehumanized and degraded because of this word.
And building off of the statistics that Lily just stated, sometimes I feel like that's an underestimate. Sometimes, sorry. I feel like it's everywhere you go. You, outside, inside, bathroom, hallway, classroom. It doesn't matter where you are. In any corner of the school, you have a very highly, a high chance of hearing this word in any way.
Continuing off that survey, these are some direct quotes from the students who responded. There were some students who reported feeling indifferent to the word. Either they just didn't see a direct impact on themselves or they just didn't know how to respond to it. So they just asked us to ignore it. But then there were other students that they really felt the impact of this word. They saw the blatant disrespect and the harmfulness that it brought into our schools. And I look at one on the bottom left corner. It says, "It makes them mad because most people don't know the true meaning of the N-word." And I think that's the root of what we're trying to do here. So we're trying to educate on the true meaning. We're trying to let people know where this is.
Hi. I am honored to be here. And I would love to give my input as a student. And as their statistics are, honestly, you do hear it every single day. You hear it in classes. You hear it in bathrooms. You hear it in hallways. And people think it's just a joke. They don't really care much. So it's like, it's just funny. It's like, it's normalized to be this way. It's normalized to tear people down. It's normalized to just be rude just because. It's like you, you lose friends because you get offended because they say something that's offending to you. And then they're like, well, this is what I say every day. So why are you mad? And it's just like, oh, because I have feelings? You shouldn't be saying that. And it's like, people, they go to the extreme and trying to hurt you and tear you down just because they can. And just because you're there. And no, no matter what race you are, what sexuality you are, anything, they just want to tear you down just because they can. And you don't even have to be of the race for them to say it to you. They'll just say it just because they think it's funny, just because they think, you know, oh, well, this is what I'm supposed to do because everybody else does it. And teachers, they really don't care. Like, honestly, at Salinas High, I have made so many complaints about so many different people, and my voice is not heard. I have said so many different things and complained about so many different things. I have been pushed and shoved and shouted at. I have been, you know, yelled at directly to my face. I've been mistreated by teachers, and nothing has happened. This is my senior year, and I'm still dealing with stuff from freshman year that nobody cares about. So it's like, it's like you're not being heard, and you're being hurt for no reason. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those testimonies. And I hope that we sit with that for a second and listen to the voices of our students. Because yes, we had passionate parents, me, and other people that came up and just let it all out on behalf of our students. But you are hearing directly from who is affected by this. So, enter the Jedi Team. 2022, born out of reaction and necessity. We came together because harm was happening. And our students, our staff, and our community deserve better. What started as an effort to coordinate harm reduction quickly became something much larger. A commitment to policy reform, to truth telling, and to creating systems to stop harm before it starts. The Jedi Team stands here today not as enforcers, but as advocates, as people who believe in the power of education to heal, to repair, and to lead with justice. We have seen what happens when our students feel seen, when they feel safe to speak up, and when they know when we have their backs. Our team works daily to highlight injustices, not to shame, but to bring light, to create plans that address them with care, accountability, and courage. We field complaints from community members, parents, staff, people who are hurting and simply want to be heard. And we do the hard work of turning pain into policy, isolation into inclusion, and fear into understanding. We locked arms with our students and built something special. And I like to shout out our activities directors from every site because they dove right in with our students with creating the Student Voice Committee at each site. Together, we created the Inclusive Language Campaign, which was a movement from the heart. The students gave it a logo, a message in slurs be inclusive, and swag that carries meaning. A symbol of pride in who we are and who we are becoming as a district. This was never just about language. It's about belonging. And now, our work calls us to take it to the next step. We're seeking consensus on adding explicit language to our current hate speech policy. The question is always out there, but what about this? And what about that? And we are speaking specifically about the N-word in all contexts. We're seeking consensus on that, that bans the language or bans the use of the N-word in all contexts within our district. Because no matter how it's said, no matter who says it, that word carries a history of deep harm and trauma. It's about saying clearly. In our policy and in practice, the N-word has no place in our schools, in our hallways, or in our hearts. This is not censorship. This is protection. This is love. That's the culture we're building at Salinas Union High School District. One policy, one conversation, one act of courage at a time.
Well, we have current board policies that may address some of these issues. As we have seen, we still need to do more, more. That's why we're calling for an amendment to the policy to explicitly address, in particular, the N-word. That's what we've been hearing most, that it's a big issue. We know there's other hate motivated speech and language. And we believe that by addressing the one that's being used the most, or seems to be used the most, it would also spread to everything else. And by putting it directly in the policy, the board and the district, we're all coming together to say like, this is what we mean. This is standing on business. To say that like, we're going to make this place a place for students to belong. And while policy is more of the, I don't know, governing part of this, we also, we're an educational institution. And we're also here to request feedback on this policy and on the student, on the Anti-Hate Speech Handbook. You should have received the link to this draft. It's still in its draft form. We want and welcome your feedback so that we all together can be part of addressing hate speech. This is to serve as a resource for the board, for district-level staff, for teachers, students, parents, on how we can address. I know teachers and administrators and other staff members at the sites are doing the best that they can. Sometimes it's not good enough, but they're trying. And we're here with the policy and with the handbook, providing a support for all of us to know how to address it when it does happen, so we can address the harm. But more importantly, as an educational institution, how can we be proactive in educating so that we, the word doesn't even, the word and the other behaviors for whatever identity and whatever group doesn't even come up in the first place? And when it does come up, like we saw in the portrait of a graduate, students are empowered, feel empowered to speak up, say something about it, where we're culturally relevant, anti-racist learners. So we're asking for you to look over this policy. I know it's the first read. Look over the handbook and then reach out to us with any questions. I know you'll need more time than, than right now to be able to look at it. So ask those questions as they come along. And if you have any questions, next, you can also ask them. Again, we want to clarify the hate language, particularly with the N-word, because the current policies talk more about like intent and like the direct use, which is not always happening, but the words are still harmful. The policy and the protocol also include information on progressive discipline, accountability expectations. And also, so it's not just something that sits on a shelf or something doesn't happen. How are we going to make sure that it's actually being effective, but it's being implemented? That the people who are implementing this are trained, they know what to do, and that the students are actually feeling like they're belonging here? And they don't have to go, have a student that said, you know, it's their senior year. But I remember from the Doll Incident Board Meeting, people like came here that were students in this district decades before that, that were still facing the same issues. So how are we going to together move forward so that, to eradicate those words and create the sense of belonging?
So I have the honor of thanking this entire group for their bravery and for acknowledging the pain that many of them have felt as being a part of our district and part of an identity that is looked upon as less than by others. And so while we don't own any of the words, and we'll just stick with the N-word, the N-word does evoke a deep-rooted pain, a vasitheral type of reaction for our black community. It has only been 10 short months ago when we were in our other boardroom. I was only two months on the job. And our black community came to this dais and pleaded with us as a governance team to do something about it. They needed the pain to stop. They needed the pain to stop. You heard testimonies from our young people here that are still experiencing the word and what it evokes in them. Violence is what it evokes. Any of us with any other cultural identity, race, or ethnicity, there are words that hurt us and cut us deeply. And so when the N-word is used against one of our black community members, our children, I want us to think of that same pain if that word that hurts our identity is used upon us. Because that's what they feel. And so 10 months ago, when they appealed to us as a governance team, they said, "No more. We have to take action. Enough is enough, and putting Band-Aids on situations is not enough." So tonight, I thank them each for their courage to stand up before us and to say, "We need to continue to work." Want to thank several other people in the audience from the NAACP, from LULAC, from the Black Caucus, from the Latino Caucus, that also want to be our partners in this very important work. Black and brown solidarity. When one of us hurts, the other hurts. In Spanish, we have words that say, "Tu..." Oh my gosh, I lost it for just a minute. "Tu lucha es mi lucha." "Tu lucha es mi lucha." If you are violated, I am violated. And so that's what we're here to do tonight. We have a board policy that is before you for our first read. And we welcome any feedback. You can go directly through me, and then I'll relay it to whichever one of our team members that can help support in that work. And then the handbook. A lot of work put into that. We did another last session to give us more feedback around it. And so that's in front of you with the link. We didn't want to put it out to the entire community because it's a draft. And as we know, we want it, we want it to be good and your blessing before it comes back for final approval. And then it'll go out to everyone. So again, just thank you for allowing us this space for us to continue to partner. The sheet that was on there shows our next workshop. We have another part, series that we're going to continue to work on. And this is the team. And so we thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions at this time.
I just want to say, oh, thank you. I just want to say thank you for your, for all the time and investment. I know it's a long time coming. Dr. Purnell, I know the timelines, and it seemed like we were never going to get to this point. As a board, we collectively, this was one of our goals for our, for our superintendent, to continue this work and make things happen. And, and, and let's get this work done. Because I was watching years ago, the timeline, the Doll incident prior to that. And it seems like nothing was getting done. We had a consultant, and then it was kind of dormant for about a year. And we went to our CSBA conference. And we, that's when we actually got to talk to Dr., to Nicole Anderson. And we had the conversation. And Dr. Galván was like, "Hold up. Wait a minute. Let's get together." She was fairly new at that point. And then from there on, you guys, pretty much, Tameisha Smith, thank you so much. I know you were doing a lot of the work. And Latisha, that wasn't being supported. And I hope that we continue to support you and our community doing this work moving forward. And we don't stop. So thank you very much.
Is this on? Yes. I'd like to give a special thank you to the students. All of you, of course, are doing an amazing job. But I know that when you're surrounded by hate, it's easy to feel suffocated. And I want to thank you guys because, you know, it's easy to feel helpless. And I want to thank you guys. I'm very proud that you guys came here, showing us that you, you still feel a list, a bit of hope that things can change for the better. So thank you.
I'm just going to echo what trustee Luhan and our student trustee said. I mean, I know members of the public may not realize the amount of time that you have committed and volunteered for, for this work. I came to one or two sessions. You guys have had session after session after session. And, you know, the work is, we still have work to do when it comes to the implementation and the tracking and all that. But we thank you for your commitment in doing the work. And, you know, we're just happy here to support you. Thank you.
I would like to thank everyone in the community, regardless of your color, gender, sexual orientation, income level, zip code, political affiliate. I want to thank everyone who has participated and shared their pain and their insights. And although I'm not African-American, I still feel pain when I hear the N-word, when I hear slurs to other people. And this is an issue that needs to be addressed with education, with understanding, and even forgiveness. But it's going to be a long road. But we're taking the right steps. We're going in the right direction. And to this young lady here, I'm so sorry. I'm really sorry. Also, I look forward to this being implemented, not only in our district, but in our feeder schools. It, it's not like a student or a child has never heard a slur or the N-word, and they've never heard it or seen it or used it. And then suddenly, they get on our campuses, and suddenly, oh, here's a new word. That's not reality. And so we need to work with our feeder schools in the future and take it one day at a time, one teachable moment at a time. And eventually, those ripples will spread out to where people are understood and respected. Thank you.
And I definitely want to thank the team, especially Ms. Allen Smith, for your dedication, like unwavering, doesn't fail, can't knock her over. Like Latisha said, standing on business, like 11 toes down. Ms. Allen Smith, she's not knocking off. But also, your ability to lead this group. But also your ability to lead this group and, and get everybody to support this and to stick with you on this. And even when you guys, like you said, sometimes we thought it wasn't going to get done, like there's something about your belief in this and what this will do to transform the environment for our students that clearly inspired many people to stick with you. So I want to make sure you and Ms. Garcia get all of your kudos for continuing to keep everybody in this. Because like the students mentioned, it might feel like there's people not listening. But each one of us who keeps the conversation going, like leads us here. This was in 2023, a dream of mine when joining the board of like us having a real policy because of work I do in CTA. I've seen Richmond and other districts get it done. Like it's in their contracts, it's, it's policy on their board. We know it exists. And as you mentioned, those students who came back for the Doll Incident, who still are dealing with the same incident, that was me. That was many of my family members, who are now very successful people, but had erroneous suspended in freshman year over a quarter. I'm not going to say the name, but if he's listening, he knows who he is. But over the word, right? So it's the pervasive use of it, too. I know we, we talk about teaching what it means and how that is what moves us to do better. But I think the real dehumanizing part of it, that is why I definitely have such large gratitude for my fellow Black community members is because it's hard to keep going with it when the ignorance of it also adds to the dehumanization of it, right? Like it isn't just the history of the word that meant. Because like we mentioned up here, it didn't matter who you were. There's kids all over campus being called it, and they're not Black, right? So it isn't even that the intention is that we, they hope Black folks feel dehumanized. It's us Black folks listening and watching everybody else do nothing about it that is the dehumanizing part, right? So I, I really want to clarify the two things. I think that everybody knows responsibly that that word is ignorant and negative and has a horrible connotation. But I don't know if everybody's really sat with the fact that nobody doing anything about it is what adds the dehumanization to Black folks. It isn't the word. So this policy for me is a first step in not continuing to just talk about, we care, we're sorry, I feel you. Like I believe wholeheartedly, the Black community everywhere, not just Salinas, is tired of that, and we want like real action and policy. This is the only way we can really put our money where our mouth is and say, we are invested in stopping the dehumanization of Black folks and Brown folks and all of it, right? This goes into our efforts against ICE. This goes into our efforts against protecting immigrant families. This goes into our efforts against all of it. If we didn't say anything about it, that's what adds to the dehumanization of our Brown brothers being kidnapped in the streets. If we're not saying anything about it, that's what it is, right? So again, I think when you guys see them out everywhere, give them multiple rounds of applause, because I don't think you understand that if they don't stick with this, like this group, it's this. I can't write the policy myself as one board member, that invisible tax I talk about, right? It can't just be me. So I personally thank you all.
I just have a question. I did see Nicole Anderson was part of this, and I know she's been doing some of our board retreats. And I was just wondering, especially, I think we heard comments earlier prior to closed session with Dr. Goldie Muhammad. You know, we've put a lot of financial resources behind both of them. And I just kind of felt earlier we were being somewhat attacked, right? For the money we're putting, which I feel, we're seeing the hard work that you folks are doing. In, in your heart, do you believe we're doing the right thing by investing in those two individuals to help our district?
I absolutely do. I absolutely do. And it's, it's the road to transformation. And while we don't under, maybe everybody doesn't understand the value, but when things start to connect, then I believe, I definitely do.
Thank you.
I also believe so. And I think I was here at the closed session, but I have also, I don't know about tax, but I know just from the union perspective, my understanding is also not just like that. They don't believe in it either, but they would like more collaboration and more transparency. So just mentioning those so that, because we need the union, we need teachers.
Right.
Everybody to do this work, and we need all of you as well. So how can we all come together to make this happen?
Thank you.
Yeah, may I also add that, coming from, sorry, I have a soft voice.
Two things, really. Coming from a mental health background, the effects, the long term effects that it would have on the children and the healthcare and, you know, seeking mental health services and things like that. I think that you guys got a bargain. And then, and then the other, the other piece of that is, prior to the commitment that was made to this work, we were this close, this close for institute in a lawsuit. So again, no, really, I'm being, I'm being serious. I'm being serious. So I think that most definitely, the money that you're investing into these facilitators, bargain.
Bargain. Thank you.
Bargain.
Thank you for that.
We really appreciate your time. This has been a long time coming, and we are excited to be on the journey. Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to D. Okay, can I have a motion to, can I have a motion to skip item D on presentations and move on to number six? Individuals deciding to address the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Who's, who's the motion?
We're making a motion to have public comment first and then do LCAP.
Do the second?
Second.
Count in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, any opposed? Okay, just for the sake of time, it's 9:00 PM. I know we all have to go to work tomorrow. We have to tend our families. So we are moving on to number six. Individuals deciding to address the board. So how many blue slips do we have, Dr. Galván?
Okay, we have about 12. So we're going to start with our first three. The first one is Daniela López Castro, followed by Fabián, followed by Armando Gutiérrez. Do we have Daniela?
Good evening. I am Daniela López Castro, and I am a student in Alisal High School. The district states as part of their vision statement that they want to create a just and equitable world. But how can we hope to create a just and equitable world if there are disadvantages built into the various schools students are a part of? Cell towers are currently in Alisal High School, exposing students, both young and older alike, to radiation. With guidelines that have not been updated since 1996, the safety of students and teachers is endangered every day the cell towers, which expose them to unknown dangers remain in the school. Additionally, it is unjust that Alisal High School is the school where the cell towers reside, while the partitioning of the money is evenly distributed among schools. If the students of Alisal are the ones who are put at risk, then why is everyone profiting equally from it? If the district truly hopes to fulfill their mission of making a just and equitable world, they should begin by taking down the cell towers, which are harmful to the very students which they hope to protect. Thank you.
Fabián?
Good evening. I'm a senior at Alisal High School. And well, I'd like to begin with, the FCC does have regulations set in place to keep us, well, to keep us safe. But, but the regulations happened back in 1996, which is back when 2G was still around. So before 3G, 4G were even launched in standard. And even then, while they were reaffirmed in 2019, they were later challenged by Supreme Court and forced FCC to reevaluate the guidelines. Meanwhile, I mean, since, keep in mind, the, once again, this is just before stuff like, we made many leaps and bounds in terms of technology, communications. And so the, that cell tower already happened, Alisal was upgraded. So yeah, there were more concentrations of radiation, RF radiation, which by itself is ionizing and usually not harmful in most circumstances. But at the, at scale, it's being taken by students and staff, faculty, even the, even young children at Alisal Elementary nearby. Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't say that's small scale or potentially non-harmful. Especially since the guidelines were taken, keep in mind, with 220, 220 pound male rather than, than any other vulnerable, vulnerable population such as elderly, immunocompromised, or the young children. So, so due to that, due to that, we should at the very least suspend or renewing, renewing the licenses or contracts this October, right? So we can further reevaluate just the safety of people around us, even especially during events such as TV football, sports events, graduation, or even people who just want to walk around the track for their own health, as they could just be further, further adding risk to it all just by being around that radiation. And well, that's just about it.
Thank you. Armando?
Sorry. Despite the numerous studies showing the negative effects of the aforementioned cell towers, the district still has these placed in my school. My peers, innocent children, and members of our community are unknowingly being exposed to these negative effects with there being little to no warning of the effects these cell towers put onto us. Whether it's at practice or football games, people, our population is being exposed to these effects without any warning. This district has continued to use our school to fund the rest of the district while we are the ones who continue to suffer for it. This issue has been put on the back burner and is being pushed, oh, is being pushed back to renew the contracts with cell service providers so the district can reap the benefits of these contracts. During the time of the reinstated, of the aforementioned reinstated FCC regulations, other districts such as the Ripon School District have removed cell towers after four students were diagnosed with cancer at their school. You can't picture it being your own son, daughter, or relative being affected by cancer until it really happens to you, and these adverse effects being pushed onto them. But with my mom's cancer diagnosis, I have seen firsthand now the drastic effects of the mental and physical well-being of the person diagnosed, and it's truly an experience I would not want to wish upon anyone. Will it take our students being diagnosed with the same cancer in order for our district to take initiative and accountability for prioritizing complaints regarding lack of cell coverage and profits over the health of our most vulnerable populations and our students? Thank you for your time.
The next three speakers, Bradley López, Jay Cardenas, and Jasleen Mesa. Bradley?
Good evening. The cell towers placed onto our campus have been linked to high rates of headaches, sleep issues, and fatigue, potentially constricting our students' educational abilities. Not only can this affect the test scores that determine the future of our students, but it will affect the overall health of our students as well. There are studies that show how living within 500 meters from the base stations of these cell towers can pose an increased risk to adverse symptoms and cancer in 80% of these studies. While these studies are about the people living near the cell towers, we must also take into account the amount of time students and staff spend near these cell towers while at school. A minimum of seven hours a day, not including extracurricular activities that are in school, like sports, clubs, or just tutorials. There's also other school districts just in California, like Palo Alto, Los Angeles Unified, and Temecula Valley, which have banned cell towers being near or in school due to what studies like the one I mentioned show. With all of this being said, my question to the board is, why has, is Alisal High the only school in our district that has cell towers in it? And why hasn't there been anything done about the cell towers in Alisal High despite the adverse health risks that have been linked to these cell towers? Thank you.
Jay Cardenas? Jay Cardenas? Okay, we're going to move on to Jasleen Mesa, followed by Marisol Mederos.
Good evening. I'm Jasleen Mesa, a student at Alisal High School. And I come here today on behalf of the students and families of Alisal High School to express serious concern about the cell tower located on our campus. Alisal is one of the only schools in the district that has a cell tower on its property, yet students, families, and even staff were never properly informed about the potential health risks that come with long-term exposure. The FCC guidelines being used to justify safety haven't been updated since 1996. Even though technology and radiation levels have drastically increased since then, if the district's mission, mission is to provide learning opportunities through equity and transparency, why are Alisal High students being asked to bear the health risks while other schools equally benefit from the 181,000 in revenue annually? We also need to consider all the people who attend graduation, sports practices, and even other events on the field directly near the tower. They deserve to know the risks as well. I urge you to stand with the students at Alisal and put health before profit. We want to feel safe at school, and that should never be too much to ask. Thank you.
Marisol?
Hello, everyone. My name is Marisol Mederos, and I'm a student at Alisal High School. I wanted to bring attention to a serious concern and speak directly to the board. There are five cell towers located in Alisal High School. These cell towers constantly emit radiation, and research has linked potential long-term health risks, including higher chances, higher chance of developing cancer. This is especially concerning to students, athletes, who spend numerous hours on the field per week. The district is choosing to profit over the health and safety of students. And it's clear that you value money from these companies more than our well-being. We trust you to protect us, but you haven't been keeping your promises or giving us information we are told we would get. Earlier this year, we were promised more information about the contract and whether you would be renewing the contract, but you still haven't delivered. There are also issues with equity and representation. Families in East Salinas have repeatedly been overlooked, and many parents don't have the same platform or resource to make their voices heard. If this situation were to happen in other schools in different parts of the district, the response would likely have been faster and more urgent. We are calling for immediate transparency, accountability, and action. The district must disclose all contracts involving these towers, conduct independent health and safety assessment, and put students' well-being above their, their own profit. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Mirsha Moncada, Roberto Campo, and Sandra Ocampo.
Hola, buenas noches. Es para mí un honor dirigir estas palabras. Mi nombre es Mirsha Moncada. Soy madre de un alumno del doceavo grado de la escuela Lizal High School. Y estoy aquí solo para agradecer a la doctora Sandra Galván por su trabajo y apoyo a nuestros estudiantes, por hacernos sentir que nuestra voz y comentarios están siendo escuchados para mejorar la educación de nuestros hijos. Señora Galván, gracias, y cuente con nuestro apoyo.
And I'm just going to translate what she said. Hola, I'm sorry. Hello, good evening. My name is Mirsha Moncada. I am the mother of one of the students in the 12th grade of Alisal High School. I am here only to appreciate Dr. Galván for her work and her support to our students, and for making us feel that our voice and comments are being heard to better the education of our children. You may count on our support.
Is Roberto Campo, Sandra Campo still here? Okay, got too late. All right, next we have Ms. Alma Laredo. Ms. Alma Laredo, followed by Pastor Smith.
Buenas noches. Bueno, buenas tardes, Dr. Galván, miembros de la mesa, cabinet, y comunidad. Mi nombre es Alma Laredo. Yo soy madre de este distrito y miembro de algunos comités de Salinas Union High School. También soy un organizador de padres con V H C Healthy Communities, Comité Padres Unidos. Parte de nuestra meta es colaborar con los distritos escolares en adoptar un clima escolar que se aseguro y como padres estar preparados para los procesos de toma de decisiones en la implementación de los recursos. Parte de nuestro enfoque en la comunidad es activar la voz y el liderazgo de los padres para abogar por sus necesidades y las de sus hijos. Usamos el LCAP como una herramienta, ya que esta ley nos da la oportunidad de asegurar la participación activa. Ustedes saben que V H C Padres Unidos somos expertos local y estatalmente, y una de las metas más importantes para nosotros es que los padres podamos colaborar en el plan de LCAP auténticamente y poner al centro el involucramiento de padres para fortalecer las metas del distrito. Los padres queremos ver reflejada la transparencia y la colaboración. Realmente agradecemos el esfuerzo del distrito y queremos reconocerlo y elevamos todo el trabajo y todo el esfuerzo que han realizado hasta ahora. Pero también sabemos que hay oportunidades para mejorar, y según el reporte de LCAP de este año, la participación de los padres estudiantes sí ha disminuido bastante. Y les quiero compartir un poco de los resultados de este año según el reporte. Los padres tuvieron la oportunidad de brindar su opinión mediante encuestas, correo electrónico, códigos QR. Hubo varios eventos de padres. Sin embargo, debido a lo largo de la encuesta, solo se recibieron 1,044 respuestas, en una disminución del 49.6% en comparación del año anterior. Y este es un testimonio de la necesidad que tenemos de buscar soluciones para asegurar un proceso auténtico, ya que el LCAP es el mapa de guía para el futuro de los niños. Venimos a este espacio a centrar nuestro comentario a la necesidad de colaborar y trabajar juntos hacia una misma meta. Nuestra comunidad nos necesita, además de que es la que nos mantiene responsables, y a ellos nos debemos. Esta tarde estamos aquí en nombre de los padres del Comité Padres Unidos. Estuvieron aquí pero se fueron. Y estamos más que dispuestos a colaborar en un buen plan que nos permita abordar las necesidades de los estudiantes y las familias. Ofrecemos nuestra experiencia y el compromiso con respeto.
Good afternoon, Dr. Galván, members of the board cabinet and community. My name is Alma Laredo. I am the mother of this district and a member of some committees of Salinas Union High School. I am also a parent organizer with BHC United Parents Committee. Part of our goal is to collaborate with school districts to adopt a school climate that is safe and as parents to be prepared for decision-making processes in the implementation of resources. Part of our community focuses is to activate the voice and leadership of parents to advocate for their needs and those of their children. We use the LCAP as a tool since this law gives us the opportunity to ensure active participation. You know that BHC Parents United, we are experts locally and stately. One of the most important goals for us is that parents can collaborate on the plan authentically and put the involvement of parents at the center to strengthen the goals of the district. Parents want to see transparency and collaboration reflected. We appreciate the efforts of the district and we want to recognize it, but we also know that there are opportunities to improve. And according to this year's LCAP report, the participation of parents, students, and staff has decreased a lot, and I want to share with you a little of this year's results according to the report of LCAP. Parents had the opportunity to provide their opinion through electronic and printed surveys. Survey links were shared by email, text messages, and QR codes, and surveys were made available at various events for parents. However, due to the extension of the survey, only 1,044 responses were received, a decrease of 49.6% compared to the previous years. This is testimony to the need that we have to look for solutions to ensure an authentic process, since the LCAP is the guide map for the future of our children. We come to this space to focus our comment on the need to collaborate and work together towards the same goal. Our community also needs us. That is the one that keeps us responsible, and we owe it to them. This afternoon, we are here on behalf of the parents of the committee, but some of them left, that we are more than willing to collaborate on a good plan that allows us to address the needs of students and families. Thank you.
Good evening, President, trustees, and members of our students community. I stand before you tonight as a pastor, a father, and a proud advocate for unity and justice in this city that we all love. And over the past year, I've witnessed powerful leadership, leadership that listens, that heals, that believes every child, black or brown, deserves to be seen, valued, and celebrated. Dr. Galván has led with heart and courage, and this Board of Trustees have stood with her in building a stronger and more unified district. And you just heard my wife say that about a year and a half ago, we were really seeking legal counsel to bring a class action lawsuit against this board because of the injustice that our black children were facing. I stand before you right now to say that we're no longer doing that. When racism and pain touched our school, you did not run away. You faced it. You worked with our families. You called us together to rebuild trust. And that's what true leadership really looks like, leading with love and moral courage. Dr. Galván amplifies student voices like the one you're seeing here tonight, ensuring that our young people help shape the future of their schools. She's expanded wellness and career pathways, helping every student discover their brilliance. And together with this board and our community, she's built bridges that remind us that black and brown solidarity is Salinas' strength. But let me be clear, the work is far from over. We must continue strengthening our hate response protocols, expanding our anti-racism actions, and committing ourselves to the hard work, daily work of unity. This is still a call to action for every one of us to stand together, listen to one another, and then lead with love. Because when we rise together, black, brown, and all, all of our students rise higher. Our schools grow stronger. Our communities shine brighter. And I'll close with this. I truly do believe in my heart of heart that Dr. Galván is the leader to carry this work forward. If I didn't believe that, I wouldn't be saying it. We must stand with her and with one another to keep our children at the center of everything that we do, because they are the purpose, and we can never, ever lose focus of the reason why you're here, the reason why we're here, the reason why our teachers are here, because our children are at the forefront of everything that we do. As we continue building black and brown solidarity, I look forward to working alongside with Dr. Galván for many years to come, united in faith, love, and hope for our young people. Thank you for your leadership.
Our last two speakers are Chris Barrera and Lyndon Tarver.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Dr. Galván, and members of the community. My name is Chris Barrera, President of LULAC Council 2055, and I'm here tonight to speak firmly and clearly in support of Superintendent Dr. Xandra Jo Galván and the leadership she brings to this district. Over the past year, Dr. Galván has done what few have the courage to do. She has rebuilt trust, restored pride, and reconnected this district to the people it serves. Through her 100-day plan, she didn't hide behind titles of bureaucracy. She went straight to the heart of this community. She listened, she showed up, and she acted. She has transformed leadership into service, not politics, not ego, but service. She has engaged students, families, and educators on meaningful dialogue, ensuring that every voice, especially from our black and brown communities, is heard and valued. Under her guidance, Salinas Union High School District has created the portrait of a graduate, a bold, community-driven vision for what every student in this district can become. That's what true leadership looks like, bringing people together to build something lasting and real. But I want to be very clear tonight. Leadership like Dr. Galván's is rare, and it deserves respect, not resistance. The negativity, the personal attacks, the subtle bias, it needs to stop, period. Dr. Galván is not just an administrator. She's a reflection of this community, a strong Latina woman leading with vision, integrity, and heart. When you attack her, you send a message to every young Latina, every student of color, every aspiring leader that no matter how hard they work, someone will still try to tear them down. That is unacceptable, and it will not go unanswered. I had the privilege of attending her State of the Union address, where I witnessed confident, articulate, and proud students stand before this community, students who are thriving because of her leadership. That is the proof of her impact. This board made the right choice in hiring Dr. Galván, and now you have the responsibility to stand behind that choice with strength and conviction. Because progress requires courage and leadership, like courage demands support, not silence. On behalf of LULAC 2055 and as a proud member of the community, I say this. We see you, Dr. Galván. We stand with you, and we are proud of you. And we thank you for leading with courage, compassion, and conviction, for showing every student that they too belong at the table of leadership. And I would like to add, what I just heard about the new policy about racism, discrimination, and hate speech, you guys took action. This board, this committee that was up here, took action. It wasn't swept under the rug like it was with the Black Doll incident, and you guys took charge, and God bless you guys. Thank you very much.
It's kind of hard to follow. Good evening. On behalf of the Monterey County Branch NAACP, it is a great pride and enthusiasm that we wholeheartedly support Dr. Xandra Jo Galván, Superintendent Salinas Unified School District. Dr. Galván has proven herself to be an exceptional leader, whose visionary approach and commitment to equality, unwavering passion in education that transformed the district and inspired generations of students, educators, and the community members. During her tenure, Dr. Galván has taken the district to new heights. Her leadership, strategic forward-thinking, and is deeply personal. She is known throughout the district by the students, parents, and staff alike. With more than 15,000 diverse students across 12 campuses, knows her by name, and a testament to her authentic courage and engagement to personal commitments that fostered all students into service. Dr. Galván's dedication to the students-centered leadership, evident of every initiative she's undertaken. She has worked tirelessly to ensure every student, regardless of their background, has an opportunity to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Her vision places students' safety first, well-being, and belonging at the forefront of achievement, creating an environment where excellence is possible because of the equality prioritized by her enhanced classroom instructions. Expanding college and career readiness programs, Dr. Galván's leadership has been instrumental in positioning Salinas Union School District as a model to include a high-performing district that can look alike. What stands out most to Dr. Galván's leadership is her ability to have cultural respect, collaboration, and empowerment. The recent State of the District address, I was floored by the students, particularly a couple by the name of Alfred Wong Everett High School and Ricardo Garcia, and the homies. Dr. Galván is the right leader for the right time. The last time I came here, this was not a good circumstance, but the NAACP clearly supports Dr. Galván moving forward and wants to partner with every initiative she has. Thank you for your time. Let's support Dr. Galván, and let's put some respect on her name. Thank you very much.
Okay, we move on to number seven, district communications, employer organizations. Okay, let's retract back and let's go to one item that we put off, and that would be item D on five presentations, LCAP Quarterly One Progress Update 2025-2026.
Would you stop? Shall we wait for them, or do we start?
No.
Good evening, President Rojas, members of the board, cabinet, educators, and support staff, and community members, and the audience. My name is Dr. Alonso. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services for our district. And I wanted to start by just saying that I truly believe that we are all here, all of us, because we believe that our work matters. The individual and collective actions that happen daily, weekly, and monthly shape the educational experience of all of our students. If we didn't believe that, we couldn't show up to work and do good work every day. So today, we have for you a Quarter One Progress Update of our LCAP. And if you recall, last month's study session was kind of like an LCAP Foundations, where we talked about the process of the plan, we introduced actions and goals. And today, our team from Ed Services and Student Services here with me will share our progress to date. So just a reminder about the LCAP, these actions are intended to support our staff and our students with programs and services that unearth the genius and cultivate joy of each and every one of our scholars. All of this brings the portrait of a graduate to life in every classroom, every day. That is our goal. So as you recall, the purpose of this presentation is really to share with you the actions and goals and services, and some data that we have to report out to you about our actions, okay? Sometimes we get a lot of data, and it's up here. We call it satellite data. We're going to share with you a little bit about what we call street data, right? Something that you can see right here in front of you that's happening in our schools, okay? And so as a reminder, the LCAP, we're in our second year of a three-year plan. There are six goals, and if you recall, there are three goals that apply to all schools in the district, and then there are three goals that apply to specific schools who serve special populations of students with unique needs. So I'm going to go a little quickly through these slides, because you've seen this before, but just as a review. Our goal one really focuses on the academic learning of our students, and we really focus on empowering all graduates to discover their passions. Notice we said empowering all graduates, because that's our goal for every student. The second goal focuses on the staff that really make that happen. And so we work hard to actively recruit, hire, and retain exceptional, diverse, and culturally responsive staff. And you've heard some of our efforts today in helping ensure that we all have the necessary training and support. And then the third goal is really focused on actively fostering and cultivating a culture of belonging, resilience, really thinking about wellness of our students and our staff. Okay, I told you I was going fast. Please slow me down if you need me to slow down. So the goal number four, I mentioned, a unique population, a unique schools. This is our Mount Toro High School. Goals specifically focused on, I just want to share with you, it's an award-winning model continuation school. I have to say that loud and proud. They do fantastic work on behalf of our students. The goal number five really is focused around El Puente School, which is an independent studies program that provides a nurturing environment that prepares students for college and career, for students who may not have found success in the comprehensive high school, okay? And then the last goal is Goal Six, Corley Community Day School, really focuses on serving our youth who have been expelled but are making moves to get back on track and graduate. In this slide, you'll see the allocation for each goal, and this was shared with you at the study session. We also shared with you a list of all the actions that are associated with each, and tonight, we will And tonight, we will not share how much has been spent to date after our first interim, we will be able to share that information with you. So the next time we come before you to share an update, you will see how much we've actually spent towards each of those, and also where we're looking closely at the impact that our actions that we identified are actually having. In other words, is our plan doing what it needs to to get us closer to our goals? Okay? So what you're going to see in tonight's presentation is organized in a different way. We have goals, but then we have indicators that are organized by priority area, and this has to do with the way that the Local Control Funding Formula is organized. So you're going to hear about eight different priority areas. I'm not sure why it's showing up, kind of weird on the screen, but there's another color. Don't worry, you're not missing much, you'll hear it in the presentation. And so we're going to start by just sharing, our directors who are in the audience here are going to share a little bit about each of the priority areas, but I'm going to go ahead and start with Priority Area One, which is really around basic services. So you all are familiar with the Williams Act, it was a settlement that is really meant to ensure that our students are in schools that are safe, clean, and that they have access to the required curriculum to support their learning. And so all of our schools participate in these, what we call kind of a mock walk, where we are, we ask our school teams to ensure that all classrooms and facilities are inspected, and to ensure safety and security, and anything that is found to be out of order, that it is ameliorated, and we have a process for that. Also, we ask that our schools ensure that students have all access to all of the materials that they need. And then every year, two schools are selected by the county to actually have a visit from the county team. And so in October, this year actually, we had two schools, it was Rancho San Juan High School and Horton Middle School. We will have a report by the end of October from the County Office of Education, and we'll share those results with you. Okay? All right, I'm going to move us on over to Priority Area Number Two, and so Mr. Cannon, if you would come on up, I think it's Dr. Hanks.
Okay, good evening. So Priority Two, I'm Bobby Cannon, Director of Research Assessment and Accountability, and I'm going to cover Priority Two, the implementation of state academic standards. So we are fortunate in this district to have a lot of support structures to help teachers, support teachers in the implementation of the standards. We have site instructional coaches that work with teachers on a daily basis, we have district TSAs that are responsible for supporting teachers in the adoption of curriculum, and the training of that curriculum, and professional development around the standards for their curricular areas. One of the main things we've been doing over the course of many years is the development of common district assessments that are aligned to essential standards, so that we guarantee that students are covering the state-adopted standards. And we began this year implementing all the standard, state, beginning-of-the-year assessments in all the core curricular areas. And then we'll pull teachers out, and we started those days to review some of the data during those days, and then we'll talk about what else happens, and those what we call collaborative release days.
Hi there, Allison Hanks Sloan, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Those release days that Bobby was referring to are collaborative sessions or professional development day. We've had over 31 in which we've been able to pull out our teachers, and that amounts to over 429 teachers who've been a part of that, and so some of that funding goes to allowing our teachers to be in those sessions and having fabulous substitute teachers in their classroom during that time. And when they come together, they meet with Bobby and his team, and they look and do a data discussion and dive into what's happening with their data, and those are the assessments that he was just referring to. They also have a chance to do some professional learning among each other, and time to collaborate and to plan. We know that research shows that time is super valuable, and those continue to happen on our calendar. You also have heard us talk about the things that are happening. I feel like we're right here in the middle of slides, I don't know if I need to ask you to like slide to the left, slide to the right, if we're going to stretch for a second? Go for it. I won't have you clap your hands, I promise. And then we're looking at these, two things happening. We're looking both at, of course, our portrait of a graduate, which is taking teams from across the district coming together. In fact, today, we had, we dove into some of that work, looking at learning progressions and looking at our learning models, but it's also looking at that how, and looking at where we're bringing the joy, the criticality, the intellect, the skills, and the identity, and looking how we sprinkle that into the work that we're doing. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to Alma.
Good evening, Board. So I have the honor to share what we do for Priority Three, which is parent engagement. And so, you know, there's always area for growth and engaging our families, and I wanted to share a few of the decision-making opportunities that parents can get involved. At the school sites, they can get involved in their school-site councils, or their English-language advisory committees. At the district level, we also have our District English Learner Advisory Committee led by Ms. Martinez, and the Migrant Parent Advisory Committee. Both focus one Delac on English learners across the district, and migrant, and our migrant population. We also soon will begin our LCAP Parent Advisory Committee. We start with our, developing of our survey, and then have stakeholder meetings reviewing that data that we obtained from the surveys, and soliciting additional data in the revision of our LCAP in the spring. Our community schools also has their own advisory councils. They do have established councils with our three schools that are in year two, and their goal is to establish councils in all the other new schools by spring of 2026. As a big area, engaging families in decision-making activities, but in addition to that, what do we offer to families to engage in learning? And I have a list of a few workshops that we've had summer till now. We've had Convivio Misteco in July, and we had Parent View, teaching parents how to navigate Parent View. And there's a couple others, and there's links there with information and flyers and time of upcoming events that are happening. Migrant Education also offers workshops designated for the migrant families, and we have some upcoming events, our 15 Annual Strengthening Family Conference, and then migrant also has a few academies coming up, as well as we are in the midst of planning our 15th Annual Cabe Conference, where we take about 40 parents. And this year, we have the honor of being co-chairs to Cabe, so we'll be a little more engaged in that leadership. The way we evaluate parent engagement, it's through definitely, you know, attendance records. We also ask for feedback after each workshop on what we can do better, what do they want to see us to bring? And you can see a few of our current data here, in addition to little graph is kind of the weekly chat with Eduardo Isma virtually, some of the attendance that we have so far up to October 7th. Wanted, you know, pictures speak for a thousand words, so here you can see a couple of our pictures from summer. Cada Corazon, we had a cohort of about eight, 12, 15 parents led by Ms. Alma Lorredo, and another team member of her team, so you can see them graduating. We have Parent Circle with Elizabeth Rodriguez, and they, this session that they had in September was, the parents asked for like skits, so Ms. Rodriguez developed some skits on how to, an issue going on with kids, and how would you respond to that issue. Migrant also had two workshops already in the month of September. Here's a workshop, I believe it was Counseling and Guidance. And then we also, we ended the school year last year with Praticas con Palafocs. And I want to end by inviting all of you to our 15th Ano Strengthening the Family Conference that will be held, will be held November 15 at El Sausal Middle School. And just to let you know, some of our sessions are Community and Human Services, that they're going to offer a workshop on communication between parents and students. We're going to have Blue Zones Project with nutrition information. We are also going to have Armida Mendoza offering an immigration workshop. Sun Streets will be offering Science of Vaping. And then we also have some workshops for teens, on one with YMCA Healthy Relationships. And then we also have Financial Literacy and the Arts Council, so I hope to see you there. And we'll move to Priority Four with Mr. Cannon.
So Priority Four deals with academic achievement. On the dashboard, that's a dashboard metric that uses the Smarter Balance English Language Arts Test, the math test, and what's going to be new this year is the science test. The, what I'm showing you is publicly released data from last week, and it's not in the form of what you're going to see when we present the dashboard to you, which is going to be released in, I think, November 13th, so we'll come show that to you. But within that Priority Four, I'm just going to touch on some of the trends we've been seeing on the actual results from the English Math and Science Test, and the LPAC. So it, this represents a three-year trend for all of our students, English learners and students with disabilities, those tend to be the ones, the different student groups that we focus on within the concept, we look at all student groups, but in terms of tracking achievement, at those collaborative release days, we really hone in on English learners, LTALs, and students with disabilities. So we had a nice increase from 2023 to 2024. We kind of plateaued a little bit, and went down just a tad in all students, and also in English learner and students with disabilities. In math, we actually have seen a nice steady increase in the percent meeting or exceeding standards. I do point out, it is still low, but we're going in the right direction on that, and that's also reflective in the English learners and students with disabilities group. Science, which will be on the dashboard as a color this year, we've also seen increases in all student groups in meeting the science test. Now, kids in science, well, English math and, English and math, kids take the Smarter Balance Test in seventh, eighth, and 11th grade. Science, they take the test in eighth grade, and they take it one time in high school, in either 10th, 11th, or 12th grade. English learner progress, this is the percent of students scoring proficient on the LPAC. It's a test taken every year by our English learners. They have to get a proficient, that's one of the criteria for reclassifying, so it's an important metric. This metric is also a little different on the English language progress indicator on the dashboard, which we'll show next time, but you can see that after taking a dip in 2024 from 2023, we actually had a nice increase. Now, I didn't, the student, they're not student groups there, it's just in comparison to how our English learners perform relative to the county and the state. So you can see that we had some nice increases, and we actually are scoring at higher levels with proficiency than the county and the state.
Bobby, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
You said the 24, I see the 24% for them. What is the percentage they have to achieve to pass?
So the proficiency level, so that represents a four on the test, so that's the percent of students earning a four on the test. Yeah. All right, now I will pass to Marissa, who will talk more about our ELs.
Good evening, Marisa Martinez, Director of EO and Migrant Programs. In this slide, you see the profile of our English learners comparing last school year to currently this school year. We do have a slight decline in number of English learner students, which reflects a drop in enrollment overall in our district. We do see a larger group of long-term English learners, which are students who have been in schools in the US for more than six years, and these students continue needing language supports. The number of newcomer students who have arrived recently from other countries, it is lower this year. We will continue updating the chart, and we do recognize that we continue receiving students with unique needs. There are students who have interrupted schooling, no schooling. We've been receiving pregnant teens or parent, like teen parents that need support academically, socially, emotional. Then we also see that the dual, the duly identified students who are both English learners and students with disabilities, or in the special education program, has remained fairly consistent right now. But this profile really helps us understand the unique needs of all our students, as we work together with different teams to develop programs that will support them both academically or socially, emotionally. So here we go. In this next slide, we see all the supports and things that we do at the different sites to improve our programs, and support for our English learner students. So we do have EL specialists and support technicians at every site, and they are in charge of monitoring the English learners, the reclassified students, and current EL students. They lead the ELAC meetings, and they support with LPAC testing readiness and during testing. And they also support teachers with, and their PLC teams, collaboration, and they do visits in the classroom to support teachers. And then we have the Curriculum and Instruction Team that supports with professional development and collaboratives that happen regularly. And then the ways that we monitor our students are through Common Assessment, the Star Reading Data, and the classroom learning walks. And with that, I will pass it on to Dr. Purnell, who will talk and how we're monitoring chronic absenteeism to support our students.
Thank you. All right, so I've got the gift of moonlighting as Ms. Vivid, so I hope you're watching and I make you proud, Ms. Vivid. So chronic absenteeism is one of our big priority areas, it's been a major focus for the district. I know the Board has had some really great questions, and there's been some big effort, so we wanted to highlight that September was our attendance awareness month. Sites were able to actually stay at 93% or higher for the entire month of September, so we want to acknowledge our site admin, our teachers, our attendance clerks, and everyone who really made that possible, because it was a huge push, and so 93% is a huge number for us. We broke down excellent and satisfactory attendance by grade level, you can see it by school sites, so about 9,300 students are performing really well in terms of their attendance, so you know what that means on the other end of the spectrum. But we want to lift this number up because it's higher than it has been historically in the past. It's pretty even by grade level, but if we go to the next one, we break it down by subgroup. So one of the things that Ms. Vivid and Gabby Forst, the Heusnadas, have really been focused on is kind of diving deeper to disaggregate that data, looking at our student groups and then the high levels of need. So on this one, you can see it broken down for our special education students, so students with IEPs, about 53% of them are in the excellent and satisfactory categories. For our ELs, it's 57%. For our youth in transition, homeless students, we're at about 55%, and then 62% are migrant kids are performing well in terms of their attendance. This was our state indicator for student engagement, so our seniors demonstrate their engagement with the California Scholarship Federation, the Golden State Seal, the Seal of Literacy, Salix of Engagement, and the National Honor Society. So these awards are highlighting their academic excellence, leadership, multilingualism, and civic engagement. Now I'm stuck with you for more slides, I'm also going to do the climate survey. This one I'm really proud of, I actually brought this bad boy right here to show you what one site Healthy Kids Survey looks like. So when we talk about going through the data, this is just North Selena's High School, so if you want a copy, I can get you one for the sites you're interested in, but it's really, a really great report. This indicator actually only requires that we collect one source of data through one grade level, but we're really proud that these are all metrics that we're using. So we're actually administering the Healthy Kids Survey in seventh, ninth, and 11th in the testing window and pushing it in. LCAP student surveys are district-wide across all grade levels. We're also doing the PBS and MTSS work through TFI surveys that we do. And then each community school was required to complete a needs and asset assessment in order to receive a grant, which we all did, so grateful for Yvette and her team for completing all of those, because they yielded a lot of really good quantitative and qualitative stuff for us to look at. So this is just kind of breaking it down. We also pull a ton of deeper data, so whether it's our coordination of care teams that we meet weekly at the site to kind of address student needs in our wellness centers, the TFI work that we do through our PBS work, these are all really strong sources of data that we can disaggregate, whether it's a discipline referrals, Ms. Vivid has put together a really great compliance training that we're looking at to progress monitor. So in addition to pulling kind of data on the regular, we want to make sure that it's projecting in the right way, so we're monitoring it along the way. This is something that we're super proud of, through community schools, we're able to push out the Healthy Kids Survey on a broader scale, so we're actually able, so like quadruple our numbers in some areas. I'm really grateful, I think it's Washington also actually had 100% return rate on their seventh graders who took the test, so we're able now to measure, I think, in a more quality way, shout out to our adult school, too, forget it to our adult learners to participate as well. So I just wanted to shout out that we've done a ton of work expanding the Healthy Kids Surveys in community schools, that's really going to allow us to measure that in the long term. Oops. And then pros and cons, right? I think when you look at data, it's going to give you things you like to see and things that you don't like to see. So I wanted to highlight some of the things that are going well for us. So we did see a decline in emotional stress, that's awesome, a decline in students who are experiencing chronic sadness and hopelessness. Students who are feeling a sense of connectedness stayed pretty neutral, but these bottom red numbers, I think, are a cause of alarm for myself and our teams. So there was a 4% increase in students who've considered suicide on our last Healthy Kids Survey. There's a decrease in students who are feeling satisfied with their lives, and an increase in drug and alcohol use. So those numbers can either be attributed to the increase in students who've completed the survey, or an increase in need. So we went back, we looked at the gagglers, we looked at our cost team notes, and this is kind of consistent with the is kind of consistent with the trend. There's a higher level of need. So, that's in the sense, we look at the equity framework, we're really going to have to adjust how we address that in our wellness centers. So, this is why we pull the data, to know how we have to staff, what intervention we need to bring if there's a provider through community schools. We're actually able to get contracts with Door to Hope to do more intensive drug counseling. So, really just using that data to kind of staff appropriately to get our students what they need has been a big push with that. Oh, gosh, suspension rates. I feel like I need Ms. Vivid's notes for this one. So, suspension rates. So, we're continuing to align our work of discipline practice and our ed code violations with the minor and major discipline referrals and alts to suspensions. There's been a huge push for the leadership compliance trainings again. So, everything from how to document, how to do the interviews, we brought in an attorney who's really providing strict, firm, legal guidance for us. So, we're consistent in our practices, which has been super helpful. Expulsion rates. So, obviously, this is an amazing graph to be able to show. So, we've had nine expulsions district-wide in the last school year, but as of this year, we're at zero. So, that's something that I think we're attributing to early interventions, to restorative practices. Really just want to lift up that number and acknowledge the work done at the site teams to keep expulsions off the table and really kind of doing those alternative suspensions from the onset. This is the work around...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The alternatives to suspen- suspension, what are the other means that they're using?
So, like our...
The highest, what's the highest? It's on the next slide.
Is it?
Sorry.
Thanks, Ms. Vivid. Here it is. So, she even spelled it out for us. So, our alternative suspension, other means of corrections include restorative conversations, parent conferences, behavior contracts, mentorships, wellness center referrals. Students and schools are using the restorative practices in lieu more frequently of expulsion. So, it's keeping students connected to learning and onsite and doing work on campus instead of removing them from campus in their learning situation. So, just acknowledging that 103 of the suspensions were in and out of school. There's 163 of the other means of corrections. And the key takeaway is that she wanted to highlight that there's the other means of corrections indicates the stronger implementation of restorative discipline and the early trends show effective tier one and two supports at preventing escalation. So, really kind of keeping it at the lower end of the discipline spectrum was really And then this one, I think, is really important to celebrate. We're super proud of the work that's been done for PBS. Really want to acknowledge Jeannie Medina. She was our teacher on special assignment who led this work. She pushed the Tier Fidelity Index. She really held the tier one teams, the tier two, three teams. She did an amazing work collecting data and holding us accountable to it in the work. So, want to acknowledge Jeannie because I think that the work we've gotten getting those recognitions has been really attributed to her. There was one note that I wrote that Ms. Vivid made me promise to say. Alvarez. So, Alvarez is appealing their silver status and they are not going to be award platinum. So, Alvarez decided that they were not. Yay! So, they... And then just to acknowledge, Harden is not listed. They had an issue with their submission, but they're working on it. So, this is one of the first years district-wide that we're all leaning towards platinum. Everyone completed their TFI, everyone did their data collection. So, again, shout out to Jeannie for really holding the district accountable there.
I'm back for Priority Seven. So, Priority Seven addresses access to a broad course of study. For us, our graduation requirements are a broad course of study. If students get Cs or higher and meet A to G, they will graduate just with our graduation requirements, eligible for CSUs and UCs. So, we track our graduation rates. We look at all the different student groups around those gradu- graduation rates. We also are expanding our AP offerings. You can see some data there, just from 2024 to 2025. We had, right now, we, currently, we have 2,640 students enrolled in at least one AP class. We have, in 2025, we had 2,454 students take an AP test, and that was up 10%. They took 4,923 exams. That's up 12.3% from 2024. And this one, the College Board, and I've kind of talked about this, I think, last time, the College Board rep was just amazed at the increase in the percentage of students or this percentage of exams with three or higher passing scores. So, that went up by 28.7% from the prior year. Another really incredible statistic is our dual enrollment. That was almost doubled, the amount of kids earning dual enrollment credit from 2023 to, I mean, 2024 to 2025. We had 957 students. So, it was almost half of that from the year before. So, again, access, I mean, we just keep expanding, and Rob will talk about that in the next couple of slides. I also want to say that we really support inclusion. We support inclusion for our English learners. So, we have EL specialists that are there to help support. We have para-professionals that are there to support ELs and for students with disabilities. We have co-teaching models, so we're trying to get as many kids access to the highest rigor class appropriate for them. And ELD, we have an ELD curriculum specialist that really works with the TSAs and all of our teachers. Last year, when we did the collaborative release days, she came in, the ELD curriculum specialist, and went with every single group to make integrated ELD part of the professional learning. So, I feel like we're really doing a lot, and we could do more, and we're tracking the data just to make more kids successful in a broad course of study. This is kind of a repeat, so I'm going to skip that slide and go on to... Yes? Oh.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet. Melody Nelson, Assistant Director of Special Education. To talk about Priority Seven, so recently, in the last year, so we adopted and implemented TeachTown, which is an alternative curriculum for our extensive needs program, which is our functional academics classes and life skills, all the way up to our ATP, Adult Transition Program. We have 390 students accessing the whole package. We have the paper and the books. We also have the tracking online, the access online, monitoring students, individual student programs that track progress as students make progress. They go up or down in their levels. There's three levels on our TeachTown program. There's the general ed, then more accommodated, and then more of the modified program. So, it also includes health and wellness as well. So, it's a huge lift for our teachers. It's going to be a lot of capacity building and PD to come, so thank you.
Good evening, Board and Cabinet, Dr. Galván and staff and meeting attendees, Rob Appel, Director of Mission Trails ROP and Salinas Union High School District CTE. And in Priority Seven, it's, I think, important to highlight our career technical education program as well. One of the things that stands out, I think, is that we offer coursework in 13 of the 15 sectors that the California Department of Education recognizes, and you can see those on the left side of the table. That's everything from agriculture, health, arts media entertainment, hospitality, transportation, and so on. If we look at the numbers along the bottom of the table, those are some things that we'll highlight as well. This year, for '25, '26, we have 60 teachers in our CTE program. That includes high school and middle school. They are teaching 78 unique courses. And of course, those courses are replicated across different sites and within sites as well for 287 unique sections. And it all amounts to offering our students, we have 7,190 course enrollments. That number is duplicated because we have some students that are taking multiple CTE courses over the course of the year. So, truly, I think it's emblematic of a broad course of study. It's comprehensive with our offerings. Moving into Priority Eight. Priority Eight is about the outcomes for the broad course of study, particularly with a focus on college and career outcomes. There's some important things to highlight here. I want to thank the Board for approving the 14 CTE dual enrollment courses last year. A point was made earlier about the growth in dual enrollment. We are tagging along with that growth in dual enrollment. We have 14 courses that you approved. We've implemented three of those. More are to come. Two of those courses this year are at MPC, they're dental assisting. We have a business course at Mount Toro. Thank you very much, Mount Toro. And like I said, we're going to grow. Some other things we need to highlight here are, is our work with dual and, excuse me, with pathway completion. We're being very intentional and very focused with increasing the amount of pathway completers we have, and we've set some goals. So, last year, the number of graduates completing a pathway for the class of 2025 was 1,126. For '25, '26, or for the class of '26 cohort, we're looking at ramping that up by 20% to 1,350. Some other goals, I think, that are worth noting are increasing, increasing our certifications. That's super important for our students. When they leave with employability and industry certifications, that gives them immediate job readiness credibility, and that's something that we will continue to reinforce and will continue to move forward with. Our goal is to grow that number to over 7,000 for '25, '26. And another big goal for us this year is to increase the number of work-based learning experiences that our students have. So, that's everything from mock interviews, anything that connects to industry, like, I think, industry field trips. We're making inroads in creating an internship plan, job shadowing. We want to provide a, at least one work-based learning experience for all of our high school students. And so, that's that 4,148. That's our moonshot. All right. So, moving on, another important part of, another important outcome is making sure we're offering CTE to all of our students. And we have some work to do in that area, but we implemented a plan in '24, '25 where we were very intentional. We reached out and we got a grant that is supporting us in providing career technical education to students that wouldn't get it within the confines of a six-period day. I'm speaking about our English language learners, our students with disabilities, right, that have these impacted schedules. And I want to just publicly give a huge shout out to the teachers you see on the right. These teachers are stepping up outside of the school day, outside of the six-period school day, by offering an X or Y CTE class. And so, that's Servondo Narvaez at Alisal, Guadalupe Guzman at Alisal, Miriam Vega at Everett Alvarez, Benji Tackett at North High, James Nichols at Salinas High, and Janelle Luganiza at Rancho. I'm also excited to announce that we are moving into the middle schools with this plan. We have a program coming with La Paz and perhaps more. Of course, another important component, and you've seen these, you've seen our students come before, our students, our leadership students, and our CTSOs, our career technical student organizations. We have students involved in Skills USA and FFA primarily in the Salinas Union High School District. We've experienced tremendous growth and success in both. Just coming out of the Monterey County Fair, we had dozens and dozens of awards. And then also, our career technical student organization, our Skills USA initiative continues to grow and will continue to move forward with that as well. I think we had, we had, we had dozens of medals in the regional competition last year, and we had seven state medalists. We had a national qualifier as well.
Nice.
Yes. All right. And then another area where our students are competing is regionally in the Monterey County CTE showcase, and our students are shining there. I think our students amounted to about half of the awards that were given there. So, truly, truly some good work being done and truly some good outcomes for Priority Eight reporting. Thank you.
So, as you have heard tonight, the work is daily, weekly, monthly, sometimes 24/7, round the clock. And I want to publicly thank our amazing team of directors from Ed Services and Student Services, who really take the lead on this every day, and our incredible site administrators, who really toe the line and make it happen at the school tonight. And of course, the teams of educators, who, as you heard, sometimes sacrifice leaving their classrooms and their children, their students, to collaborate with each other from across the district. So, I did want to point out that there are multiple opportunities on any given day across this district. You will find teams of teachers working together with school leaders, either training, building a system, refining a system. And so, there's lots of collaboration happening up and down the system to ensure that we build the district that we want for our students. So, today, you heard an update on our actions, and the next update will include actions and services, dollars spent to date, the impact that that has as per our local indicators. So, you heard a lot of data points today. And so, we're making progress and we have much more work to do to elevate the genius and joy and wellness of our students here in Salinas. Thank you. Any questions? Sorry. Questions? That's the next slide. Did you want me to move?
No, it's fine. What two sectors aren't we offering?
It is energy and fashion. Yeah. I mean, we also, we also very purposeful in our program. We try to look at where the jobs are, right, and the most secondary is as well.
First of all, thank you for answering my questions in advance. I wish the public had those, that information as well. But thank you for answering those questions. I have just two. Regarding the academic progress of our students, when will the Board have access to maybe the first round of benchmarks or CFAs so that we can see their progress? When will we have access to that?
So, that data has been shared with our, with our school sites, the teachers who are in those content areas, and it's the data that we look at during the collaborative, so we can put something together in a file and share that out with you, maybe in the Friday Mail.
Okay. And the second question deals with the LT ELs. So, as a teacher, I'm familiar with our students, our ELs, and they get to a certain level where they're, they feel comfortable or proficient so that they can succeed in the classroom. But yet, what's missing to get them to be reclassified? What's missing so that we can get them to go above where they are so that they're, they get those fours and fives and are reclassified?
Invite our directors if they want to share. A couple of things in my experience and what I'm learning as I'm collaborating with educators across the district is that our English learners are not all created equal, and so you saw the chart that had the unique needs. That's really important because as we look at the programs that we offer site by site, there are some variances in terms of how we group students, the programming we offer. We offer access to standards-based instruction to all of our students, and yet, we're finding that there's some needs that are very individual that we need to address in a different way. So, we're exploring those, as well as model programs outside of the district that we can replicate. But in addition to that, we're actually working on revising our English learner master plan, which will help us understand the needs of our students today, all right, and to better address those needs. And one of the things that you'll see coming soon is a proposal for a change in the reclassification criteria. Sometimes our own internal systems are what's keeping students from achieving those goals. And so, you'll see next month's board meeting before you, you'll see a proposal to, to change the reclassification criteria, to modernize it, to keep up with our standards today. And it's a change in the STAR reclassification. We actually have a group of students that, under our current criteria, don't qualify, but as we update our criteria to reflect a unified scale score and more industry standards, we have a pool of students who technically could be eligible to requalify this, or to reclassify this semester already. So, it's a combination of our instructional practices, as we look at what students are receiving opportunities daily in the classroom to practice speaking, right? But it goes beyond that. Their reading is really important. So, we also have a comprehensive literacy plan that was put together by a committee that we're exploring. Implementation of, I know that literacy was really important, it came up the last time we were together, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Purn, the reasons kids are being absent, I thought we were going to be getting some of that data. Do you guys get any of that data? The reasons why kids are missing?
We can send it. So, we were trying to cut down the size so we can have it.
Okay.
Looking down by illness, by...
Whatever the reasons are. Okay, yeah, that. And then, just for the parent engagement, Alan Maloreto again spoke today about, you know, we can do better. So, just hoping that those communications with, you know, those community partners is going on and it's not just at the end, that, you know, the collaboration is from the beginning until, you know, you start working on the surveys for the parents. LPAC surveys that, you know, that communication is, is continuous.
Thank you. I just want to add that we have already begun our LPAC community engagement meetings. Every school site is required to hold one where they share the data and also make space to get input from parents about how they're experiencing school and maybe any recommendations. So, those are ongoing. We can share with you a calendar of dates that all the schools are hosting those, and they have a data presentation that they share this data and make space to get input from parents. So, a survey is one way to get data and input. Also, conversations and brainstorming sessions in person are also part of the data collection that we use to inform our LPAC.
Dr. Alonso. My question was, is, as a communication with our community partners... My question was is is the communication with our community partners that's happening, right, and continuous?
The answer is yes, 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 okay.
Is there a way? Because we had more we had more last year.
Yeah.
That did the communication. Is there a way to go back and see who to did it last year but then did do it this year so we can contact them and see why they didn't do it?
As part of the survey?
Yeah.
No, because they're confidential, and we have no way of tracking who submits a survey. Some of them are hard copies, and we just input them. Some of them do the QR code, and there's.
Okay.
So there's there's not a way yet.
Yes, yeah.
Hard to develop. But at the moment, you know, some parents do our copy, and we just input data. Some of them do the Google, the Google form or the QR code. So we haven't done it, but we can look at possible options.
It would be nice to know, you know, why they didn't do it this year.
We also did hear feedback that it was very long. And so we are looking at condensing it to really just get the data that we're looking for, but also do it in a way that is doable for parents.
Dr. Alonso, if I could just add to Vice President Carrillo about the attendance. I think it's going to be really important. I think in Dr. Pernell's slide deck read that for the month of September, all our schools were at 93% to 94% attendance rate. So I think that is one big huge step in making sure the students come to school. The other thing is like a big factor is that is, you know, we're seeing the impact now based on the presentations that we heard at the at the district State of the Union and tonight. When students are happy about what's going on at their schools, when they can buy into the portrait of a graduate, when they understand what Dr. Goldie Muhammad's work is, when students are bought into what we're trying to do and put them first, along with the fact that we know that the biggest impact on student learning is to support teachers and to provide them with the tools necessary. Because along with the highlights of our students, we also see the teachers being in that role, in those pictures, being that support, being that coach. And I think that you're going to be very happy to to see that there's going to be a tremendous increase in our attendance for this year.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
We will follow up with the requested information to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we move to number seven, district communications. A employer organizations, CSEA. SVFT. Okay, we move on to B board members. And just for the sake of time, I'm going to have student member Kayla go first, just because after her presentation, she has to go to bed, pass her bedtime.
Yes, I do. So I have a I have a field trip. We leave tomorrow, and I have to be there at 5:30 a.m.
Oh, my goodness.
So big time. I'm going to get through this, but I'm very, very excited. I'm very proud of this report. So all of the board members and everybody here, if you check your emails, you'll find a surprise, which is the two documents that I created, which are a part of this report. So one of them is the report that I'm going to give out, and the other part is the data, both of which can be found. There's fully bilingual versions. So if those are needed, you can reach out to me personally, and I'll get it to you. So this is my student board representative report by me, Kayla Alvarez, your student representative on the Board of Trustees, and the topic is the Student Voice Survey, the pilot results, and the next steps. So first, why I created this survey. My goal in creating this survey was simple but urgent, to give students a direct channel from them to the district. Advocacy starts with knowledge, and this project is my way of making sure that I'm equipped to do to fulfill my role as student representative responsively. When I speak, I want to make sure that I'm speaking up about the things students are actually living, not just my own experiences, not just surface-level complaints, and not just one group's perspective, right? One of the hardest parts about this role, I found out, has been realizing that many students don't even know what advocating for themselves looks like. That's why I'm doing this. Listening to the loud minority is very, very easy, but it's so much harder to reach those who have grown used to being told to be quieter or to be, you know, make the best of what they have. And this survey is for them. It's about opening up the opportunity for all student voices, no matter how quiet they are, to be heard. So the process, from idea to pilot. If you remember last board meeting, I talked about this, and it was such a rough idea, and it truly came as with time as I worked with our beautiful staff members, but it took a lot of work. So when I first came up with the idea of a student survey, I didn't realize what a huge undertaking it would be. I wouldn't hide the challenges and confusions we ran into the pilot phase because that is exactly why I'm so grateful we started at Everett Alvarez High School. I used Google Forms with 16 multiple-choice questions and 10 open-ended questions with the help of peers like Christian Sanchez. It was formulated to take around 12 minutes to complete. So as we talk about surveys, surveys like we just did, a lot of the reasons why people either don't fill them out or don't fill them out a second time is because they're too long. So from the beginning, I created the surveys for all schools. Each is fully bilingual with its own link and QR code flyers entirely independently. So this is something I did on my own time. I made sure that each each and every like survey and flyer had the school colors and the logos and making them all pretty because I just had to. However, after going through the responses, many of the students seemingly remained under the impression that this survey was created by some faceless entity that was just conspiring to collect their data. So I want to make sure that students know that this survey is a completely student-made project, the student being me. And if they don't know me, then they don't know what my job is and why I'm making this survey, meaning that I'm not doing my job completely. Piloting it at Everett Alvarez High School would not have been possible without the incredible support of staff members like Ms. Maria Cuentas, Mr. B, Mr. Solinsky, Mr. Tumanelli, and of course, our incredible principal who stayed all this time, Mr. Ocampo, who helped me integrate this survey into classrooms and encourage participation. There were logistical wrinkles, of course, communication hurdles, and lots of questions, and it makes sense. From what I've gathered, not many students have tried to create a survey for students only before. One of the biggest questions I faced was how are we going to get kids to actually fill this out, right? When I made the first rough draft, I gave it to my friend, and I said, "Fill this out. Let me know how long it takes you." And I watched him click immediately into the survey and then click next. Before he had to click next, there was a whole passage that I wrote being like, "This is me. This is why I'm doing this." He just clicked next, didn't even look at it. And I was like, "That's what they're going to do. That's sadly what kids are going to do." And it makes sense because when I fill out a survey and I see a big, long paragraph, I'm like, "Eh," I'll just look at the title. Hopefully, I'll get it. So one of the biggest questions I faced was how are we going to get kids to fill it out? Because when I say your voice matters, it's not a slogan, right? We hear it a lot. But this is me asking for their help because I can't advocate entirely until they tell me what's really happening. So the data findings in the Everett Alvarez High School pilot, out of around 2,072 students, a total of 754 students participated in the pilot. That is a 36% of the entire student body population that responded to the survey in 11 days, giving us a representative sample of the larger body. They represented grades nine through 12 and came from programs including Avid, Buente, migrant education, athletics, band, drama, special education, and more. The quantitative overview, we had statements such as, "I see my school, I see school spirit at my school," which had an average of a 3.7 out of 5, meaning that school pride is moderate but not universal. We had, "I feel my needs as a student are being heard" with an average of 3.4. Some progress, but mainly students still feel unheard. The statement, "I am proud to be a student at Everett Alvarez High School," had an average of 4.1, one of the highest, meaning that we have a strong sense of identity and pride. "My culture, language, and identity are being celebrated" had a 3.9, meaning that students largely feel seen and represented. And ASB represents students like me had a 3.2, one of the lower ones, indicating a need for broader outreach. Some qualitative insights, many students praised clubs, rallies, and sports, particularly multicultural events. But a significant proportion, which is one nearly one in every four students, shared that they struggle to find belonging, connecting with peers, or participating in extracurriculars. This isn't about a lack of options. It's about accessibility, communication, and whether students feel truly welcome to join. Some issues that stand out, and these are all data-backed, however, due to confidentiality, all authors of written responses will remain anonymous. The first and stood out the most, as we talked about attendance, the first issue that I encountered that was the most prevalent was getting to school on time. So within the challenges section, there was an option in which you could click the box that you felt most identified you. Of course, you could click several. Most students, in fact, 216 out of 754 students, which is roughly 30% of students that filled out the survey, selected the option that it is hard to get to school on time. Transportation barriers, early schedules, and family responsibilities are major challenges. This is not a matter of effort. Students are trying. It is a structural issue that directly affects attendance and achievement. If we want students to succeed, we first make sure that they can arrive. Here is some written input. A student wrote in, "It is so hard to take the bus, and having to basically run to it is even harder. That is not fair at all to me and many other students that take that bus. That bus leaves at 3:46, and the bell rings at 3:44." Another student wrote in, "Hiring more buses for the students could be a good idea because two buses are simply not enough." Another student said, "Sometimes the buses get overfilled, which make people have to get off." Another student wrote in Spanish, but I'll read the translated version. When asked what the district could do better, they said that they add another bus afterwards, specifically for students who stay longer apart from one that already after-school classes. There are students who stay for practice, and it ends later, and they can't be picked up. In that same vein, another student said that there be a bus at 7:00 p.m., so those of us who have a seventh period could also have the opportunity to do sports. Sometimes because of a lack of operation, transportation, we don't get the opportunity. That's what transportation is, an opportunity. A lot of kids don't can't join sports, can't join extracurriculars, can't join after-school activities, which help in connecting with peers and belonging because of a lack of transportation. What are we doing to help those students? Another issue that was very prominent was the reaction to the cell phone policy. 64 written responses specifically mentioned the words "cell phones," "pouch," or "yonder." Students recognize the intent behind the policy but question its cost and its impact. 22% of all responders said they would rather see those funds go towards facility upgrades or better lunches. Some expressed concerns about emergency access or the policy's impact on trust between students and staff. This feedback suggests that enforcement alone cannot replace engagement. Students want to be a part of the conversations. They want to be a part of solutions. A student wrote in, "I strongly disagree with my student needs are being met. As I feel like the school is using school resources to fix problems, they created and not set aside resources to cover other materials. A pretty evident one is the new yonder cell phone pouches, which are intended to be used with the new cell phone policy. I'm not against the bags, but I do find it frustrating that the school can dedicate money to these bags, but whenever I go into a classroom and try to find a box of tissues, I'm told there is none. Instead, teachers have to rely on students themselves to purchase them for extra credit or teachers needing to buy them out of pocket. I know this may be insignificant, but it's vital to have minor materials like tissues in classrooms to make students succeed in class. After all, no tissues means other students can become sick and in turn reduce attendance, which by now we know the school has a whole month dedicated to it." Another student said, "The new phone policy didn't feel like the right thing to do because there are other things to worry about, like the bathrooms being fixed, AC in the 400s, better cafeteria food, et cetera." Another student simply put it, "I find it useless. So does the majority of my grade. The district cares more about our phones than about the violence going on throughout the schools." The phone pouch policy is widely viewed as restrictive and not addressing core safety or engagement concerns, even raising fears about emergency communications. Another issue was school infrastructure and accessibility. 22% of students identified issues with school facilities. Frequent mentions of bathroom access, cleanliness, and broken infrastructure reflect growing frustrations. Students described restrooms as overcrowded or poorly maintained and called for greater attention to accessibility and comfort. These are not trivial concerns. They affect dignity and daily learning conditions. Most students that selected this option were concerned with the bathrooms. Many were drug-related. A student wrote in, "Drug use at school is not very is not regulated very well at all. Students will constantly find ways to drink or smoke in the bathrooms without minor consequences." Another student said, "There are multiple students at a time in the bathroom. They don't use the bathroom, but they chill in the bathroom, which only holds a line for other students, but some students carry in special devices and use them in the bathroom." Issues written in responses that were only bathroom-related. Some persons, some people simply wrote in, "The bathrooms are always so dirty." Another person said, "The lack of school facilities, for example, student bathrooms, while there are many student restrooms all over campus, they only have two open for each gender every day. This is a very small considering the amount of students we have. I also don't think that it's fair that students say we can only use restrooms three to four times in a quarter in their class." Another student wrote in, "The 600 girls bathrooms in the girls' locker room stalls should be fixed." This is something that if you're not familiar with, a lot of, and I've noticed this across sites, a lot of restrooms appear fine, but once you get into the stall and try to lock it, a lot of locks are simply non-functioning. And that has become especially a problem in the girls' locker room, which, you know, is used during school and after school. Some other students wrote in, "There needs to be AC in all the classrooms because it gets really hot, and it's hard for teachers to preserve their classrooms feeling cold and not humid. I think students can't concentrate because it's really hot and uncomfortable." Another student simply wrote in, "Fix the roads and even them out." It's as simple as that. Another issue that we found was belonging and connection. 20% of students reported trouble making connections with peers. This indicates a deeper challenge in school culture. Clubs, cultural celebrations, and creative arts programs are not extras. They are essential avenues for inclusion. Students want more structured opportunities to build community through shared interests, especially where language and social barriers exist. Another student wrote, "Heavily focused on those who are struggling the most since it's very common to get to get people connected with peers, generally the worst type of feeling out there." Another student wrote in, "Take bullying and harassment way more seriously because I can't tell you how many times I've been bullied or laughed at, and no one noticed or has taken me seriously." Another student wrote in, "I feel good, but sometimes it's hard to concentrate since certain classmates do things that are annoying or distracting." In the vein of extracurriculars, students wrote in answers that complained about money and how underfunded our clubs are. And lastly, the last issue I have is being heard. Now, this one's one that I want to bring a special attention to. When asked, "Do you feel students at your school have enough opportunities to share their ideas and concerns with adults, meaning teachers, administrators, and the district?" 41% of students gave a flat no. 49.6% of students said sometimes, and the remaining 46.3% responded yes. However, over 60 open-ended responses feeling mentioned not feeling heard or listened to. Students are asking for a presentation beyond token input. They want their perspectives reflected in disciplinary policies, curriculum planning, and event decisions. This is a call for authentic, consistent student engagement and governance, not symbolic representation. When asked, "What is one thing your school or district could do to listen to students better?" A student wrote in, "I think making sure that the groups in the school that represent the students include different types of students from all grades and from different programs that are in to accurately represent the students." Another student wrote in, "Maybe release more surveys like these that give students an opportunity to voice their concerns over certain aspects of school." And another student wrote in, something that I want to highlight, "Make their opinions anonymous. I know for sure I would participate more if they didn't put everyone in the spotlight," which begs to question the relationship that students have with the district and with administrators and with staff about trust. Reflecting on the pilot, the pilot was a success, not because the results were perfect, but because the responses were real. Responses were collected from the date of release, which is October 2nd to November 13th, a span of 11 days. Students shared stories, frustrations, gratitudes, and hopes. They provided, they proved that when given the chance, they will speak up. Now it's on us, the board and decision-makers, to listen and act. I can only hope to get a similar abundance of responses from all sites as we did Everett Alvarez High School, which I have no doubt with the help from our amazing staff and community schools, we will be able to do. The key once again lies in emphasizing the importance of student voice. They may not recognize it, but by taking a few minutes, they are making an impact that will leave a legacy of student-made reform. The next steps will be expanding across the district. This initiative is is expanding to include all 12 district schools. Every high school, middle school, and alternative program has its own tailored survey created by me. My goal is not to produce a single state of student voice report and move on, but rather to continuously monitor, analyze, and elevate student perspectives as my time as student representative. For example, at the end of the semester, once all surveys close, I will make an entirely new survey with a completely new structure and purpose. This one will go exclusively to all students who opted into the follow-up option given at the end of the survey. Here is where I noticed two interesting things. One, students did not know who the me in the leave your contact info for me to follow-up was. This reiterates my point that I need to do a better job of advertising this as a student-made initiative and at making sure that students know who I am, but more importantly, what the position of student representative is. Come next year, there will be a completely different person sitting in this chair, and I want to make sure students feel just as comfortable approaching them with their concerns. Number two, another student pointed out-
Can we please make a little pause because we really need to get approval past 10:30, our meeting?
Oh, yeah.
So can I have a motion for, to extend our meeting past 10:30?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Hall and favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. Carry on.
Sorry. Thank you. Number two, another student pointed out that they did not know what I meant by "follow up", but that they were not taking the chance of it meaning that I was going to report them and that they would be taken out of class and into the office to be questioned. This was very telling again of the relationship many students have with the school and the district in general and the underlying lack of trust that we work towards mending every day. I want to personally thank every student that took the time to fill this survey out, not only for giving me their time, but also for giving, for being trusting enough to confide in me their concerns and trust that I will represent them. It was very touching and eye-opening to read all of their responses. That being said, the next survey will also work as a channel through which I will be able to amplify student voices. Each round of data will bring new insights allowing us to respond dynamically and equitably to evolving student needs. And here's my call to action. The district has taken a bold step by allowing a student to collect and analyze this data. Now I ask for partnership in turning these findings into visible, meaningful action. If we are serious about being a district that puts students first, it is time to prove it, not only by listening to student voices, but by acting on them. These results represent more than numbers. They are the lived realities of hundreds of young people who trust that their district will hear them. This became abundantly clear as I was going through all of those responses. Each one of these students is going through so many things, and it is so special for me to read that. For many, school is a refuge and a place of joy. And I think you should all be very proud of yourselves and the work you do. One student wrote in, "I've heard our superintendent's 100-day plan and maybe feel like, maybe it can change things for the better." I will continue to collect, interpret, and communicate this data to ensure that every decision reflects the student it is impacting. This is how we move from being a district that values student voice in theory to one that practices it in every decision made. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, so. So we'll start off with trustee Robinson.
Kayla, thank you for that inquiry-based information. I do enjoy hearing your great endeavors into researching things. I just want to give a shout out to Jazzy Placencia, who is actually from the Eagles Nest. She volunteered for community service hours at Cameron to do face painting with me at the Fall Festival last week. So, thank you, Jazzy. I told you I'd get you the name, Mr. Ocampo. And any other students who want their community service done at Cameron, email me.
Okay, trustee Kedis?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Felice?
Stole my line. Um, I have a few updates on construction. Also High is on, on time. They're looking good out there. Had some things delivered yesterday, which was a good day to have them delivered because there's no students there and they had to use the crane, so that was good. Alvarez's P.A.'s looking really good. Tour de dat yesterday, so that's awesome shape, on time for March, just like Also. North High is done except for the road and a few little things with landscaping, so that's ready to go. Salinas High is just finishing the painting, a little touch-up work here and there. And once we get PG&E to turn on the power, we'll, Dallas should stay on track. If PG&E doesn't get the power on, then we're going to be a little, little late on that one. Okay?
Trustee Huerta?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I would like to acknowledge Mary Ann Sterns and Tony Nacita of iAmp Pro Audio. If you attended the State of the District, uh, event at Salinas High School, they were the people that were handling the audio. She was the woman that was always coming out and adjusting the mic and moving. So I just want to give her a shout out. Thank you for your, your help. Uh, next, I'd like to give a shout out to, uh, Coach Steve Zink in becoming the winningest football coach in Salinas High School history. And my history of Salinas High goes back to 1981 when I was a reporter at the Salinas Californian and the coach was Vic Santora. So congratulations, Coach Zink. And then finally, uh, again, I implore this board to return to two meetings per month. It is now 10:34 at night and we've only taken two votes of action, and those were in closed session. I know that there are people here that have families, uh, children, other obligations, lesson plans, field trips at 5:30 in the morning. And I, I don't think that's a, that's not good governance, in my opinion. It's not good governance, it's not transparent, and I, I just feel that we need to go back to two meetings per month. Finally, I'll add on the consent calendar, there are 94 items. And, and everyone knows, I've read all 94 and I've probably read some of them twice or three times, but that's, I choose to do it, that's my job. But on some of those consent items, the board is being asked to approve items that have already taken place or the contracts have already started. And, and I know that the superintendent and executive cabinet are authorized to enter into agreements, but there are eight of them, and I don't, I don't think that should be happening if we had two meetings per month. So, I know everybody's tired. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Lohan?
No comment.
Trustee Carillo?
No comments.
Okay, I'll go with the no comments as well. Superintendent Galvan?
I do need to defer over to Assistant Superintendent Aguión for, um, a comment with regard to our architect selection.
Thank you, Superintendent Galvan. So, um, in August we met and we brought forward the project list for Measure G and Measure M. And as part of that process, we also mentioned that we would be going through an architect selection process. And the RFQ has been issued, that was issued on September 12th. We have received the responses that were due on October 10th. So we are getting ready to, um, review all of the RFQs and also schedule the interviews. And trustee Felice is a representative for facilities, but, um, we can go ahead and we can have two other board members, at least two other board members. So we are taking volunteers for that committee. If not, in the past, we have proceeded with, um, Mr. Felice and, um, and then of course, the facilities team.
You need more, you guys with the volunteers?
Yes. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, did you want to get on that or?
Sure.
Mike. Kate, trustee Kate. Great, thank you. Okay, and then our plan is to, um, have the interviews and then bring the selection to the board on November 18th. Thank you.
Okay, just, just a couple of them. First of all, just want to share with the board, welcome to Grace Torres, that is the new Senior Executive Assistant to the superintendent's office. So if we can give her a round of applause. And also want to give an incredible shout out to, um, Ms. Priscilla for doing an amazing job in the transition, so if we can give her a round of applause.
Kids are still back there.
Um, and then just real quickly, I just want to share a few things. Tonight, we heard from some phenomenal students, and I think it's just a testament to the work that we're doing. Uh, Ms. Jordi's kiddos, uh, from Rancho San Juan, uh, the students who represented the council, as well as the anti-racist groups that came out here tonight to really, um, implore us to continue the really good work. Want to say thank you to everyone, all the partners that were here tonight, um, and to our parents. And then want to remind everyone that homecoming is still coming up, uh, this week and next week. We have a couple last ones. And then, uh, I just want to finally just share that this work is hard, um, and we don't want to shy away from it. And so we heard from several folks, uh, earlier in the meeting tonight when we got started, um, and it is definitely better when we work together. I agree with that and, which is why we've been wanting to collaborate and sit at the table. And so I want to invite, um, anyone who made comments earlier this evening to this space tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. Uh, we'll bring our teammates and we're really excited to start collaborating and talking about some of the issues that came up. And so I invite you again to be here, uh, tomorrow night, 6:30 p.m., right here in this space, and we'll roll up our sleeves and get to work. Thank you.
We move on to number eight, action items. A variable term waiver request. Lori Anderson. Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the next item is to approve the proposed superintendent's employment agreement. And before we discuss and act on this item, we are required to state the material terms and the fiscal components, which I will read as follows. The agreement is for a three-year term from October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2028. There will be opportunities during the term to extend the term by one year following completion of the superintendent's evaluation period. The base salary will remain at the current rate of $308,000. The superintendent's salary is understood by the parties to be indefinite or uncertain. Therefore, there will be opportunities to increase salary by mutual agreement at any time after completion of the superintendent's evaluation period. Sick leave is earned at the rate of one day per month. The work year is 222 days and the board may require up to 10 additional service days per year payable at the superintendent's per deemed rate. Health benefits will be the same as the district provides to other management employees. An automobile stipend of $400 per month will be added to pay for the superintendent's use of her personal vehicle within the district and county for conducting district business. Mileage reimbursement will remain for business-related travel outside the county. A stipend of $100 per month will be added to offset the costs for the superintendent's use of her personal cellphone for district business and for her to acquire a, a separate cellphone line for district business. And finally, there are standard termination of contract provisions, including mutually agreed upon. The superintendent's resignation, termination for cost and without cost. On the termination without cost, a 12-month buyout provision is retained along with benefits until she would retain other employment. Having given the contract before, having looked at it and what I added, is there any discussion?
Board President, on the last item you mentioned, I think, uh, you misspoke regarding if a superintendent is released, um, without cause. There's a difference between without cause and with cause. So I believe with cause, there's no, no payment. But without cause, if there's a separation agreement, it is one full year or less, if it's less than 12 months, whichever is less expensive, less expensive. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was sent to legal. Take a look at it. So this was, was given, so, um, we could go back and discuss it and then make any adjustment changes before we get this approved?
Okay, so.
So the last one. You just want to change the last wording, uh, with, without cost and with cost?
No.
What are you reading? I'm just trying to follow along.
Okay, so the last, the last item. I'll read, I'll read that again. Okay. There are standard termination of contract provisions, including mutually agreed upon. The superintendent's resignation, termination for cost and without cost. On the termination without cost, a 12-month buyout provision is retained along with benefits until she will retain other employment.
That's correct. I didn't hear that the first time. You heard with, without cost, paid. I heard the same thing.
Okay, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
So everyone's in accord with this agreement?
Because that's the law, right?
Yeah, we had legal take a look at it.
I mean, I read it, I knew it, but I heard the same thing where it got heard too, so thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion, anything you want clarification?
Well, I will ask the board if, if the board needs, um, I'll do it this way. I will make a motion to recess for 10 minutes so the board can discuss this in closed session. That's my motion, to recess for 10 minutes to discuss in closed session.
Trustee, what, is that prior, did we, I stepped out. Do you already consent items? Are we, do you want to wait till after that or?
I'm making a motion to recess for 10 minutes to discuss action item B, approved superintendent employment agreement. No, I'm making it right now. We would recess for 10, I mean, would, would, uh, go into closed session for 10 minutes to talk about action item B, approved superintendent employment agreement. That's my motion.
Um, trustee Huerta, the reason I'm asking is because there's still people here, so I was wondering if we could go through the rest of it and then recess for 10 minutes after we've gone through the rest of the agenda. That was my, that's the reason why I asked that. I saved time.
Table, did you consent item or? You wanted to do consent items first?
Is this something different than what we had discussion at closed session? Because, um, so I, I think we could do this kind of, um, kind of table and pull it for right now and then wait for it to the end and vote on it and do the rest of the things, the action items, and then the, uh, and then we'll go into closed session, that way we don't keep everyone waiting.
Pull it, I think you want to pull it.
You want to?
You think you want to pull it to the end? And someone should make a substitute motion.
We have to vote, we have to vote on this, yeah. So if we, if we, if we go to closed session, we have to have a second?
We need to second his request.
Right, so he asked, he asked for the motion, do I have a second?
Unless Natalia wants to offer a substitute motion. Meaning, does she want to do the consent, does she want a motion to do the consent first and then come to this?
Let me, yeah, substitute that, I don't, I don't want. Go ahead, you just said, is there a second for?
Is there a second? Okay, not, not here in a second. Uh, then we will go ahead and proceed with the, with the vote on this contract.
Okay. Now, I will make a second motion. I motion that we continue with all items on the agenda, except action item B, and then we take a closed session to, uh, discuss action item B and then come back out and report any action taken.
I'll second that.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So item B, we will put it up till the end, go back closed session, discuss it, and we will continue with the rest. Okay. Number nine, information items, Hispanic Heritage Month update, student services. Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, there was, just want to let you know that, uh, we put together, uh, a slide deck where all the schools, uh, celebrated, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month and we wanted just to kind of come back and just show the board, uh, some of those highlights through this text slide, so that's why it's there.
Okay. All right, thank you. So now we go on to 10 consent items. Is there any item that anyone wants to pull?
Yes. Victor, Victor. I need to abstain on that.
Okay, just, uh, Victor, Victor, Vivi?
Vivi, Victor, Victor, and then Victor, Victor, Victor.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and pull, um, item RRR and also OOO. Okay, so let's start with. Let's go with trustee Warta with VV. Okay, we open it, VV dot minutes from September 17, 2025, special board meeting for discussion? No? You're just gonna abstain for?
Correct.
VV.
On VVV2?
No, no, just on VV.
Okay.
Three Vs or two Vs?
On two Vs, I need to abstain. I was not at the meeting.
Okay. All right. Now, okay, we move on to VVV.
Well, is there a vote on that? Does she need a vote on that?
Yes.
To what, to pull it?
For VV.
To vote.
He wants to pull that because he's gonna abstain.
He can do whatever, maybe he can either motion to do the rest and then we can talk about VV, or you can motion to do that one right now.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
We need a motion.
A motion, we vote on VV right now.
Okay, second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so let's take a vote on.
You can't second if you're abstaining, Mitch.
So I motion to vote on VV. He thought we were motioning on VVV.
No, it's VV.
So I motion to vote on VV.
Second.
Okay. So let's take a vote on VV dot minutes from September 17, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve that?
That was the motion.
There was, so all in favor for VV?
Aye.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, thank you.
Okay. All right. Now let's go on to VVV, three Vs. Approved bond project list from August 25, 2025.
So the reason I pulled it was I have a problem with just future projects, but nothing defined. And secondly, I'm under the impression that Alisal High School needs classrooms. That's my understanding, I could be wrong. But for Alisal High School, we have a multi-use building, which I know it needs, and then swimming pool. And I'm not sure how a swimming pool connects to Portrait of a Graduate and The Five Pursuits. How does a swimming pool connect to those things? If someone can tell me, then I want to understand.
Michael Phelps, a genius in athletics, Olympic.
I just think it's very important for everyone to know how to swim.
It's definitely a skill.
You never know when you're gonna be around a body of water and you have to jump in to go save somebody. It's good to know how to swim.
Okay.
Well, we had an in-depth conversation.
Right.
You know, this was all provided by the sites, parents, students.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I can maybe just add on this.
We had a public meeting
Yes.
at Elsasal. And this was driven by the public, the students, and staff. This was their desire.
Okay. But I didn't see that in the previous priorities. I never saw a swimming pool till the very end. Also, one last question. Did our district look at partnering with the city of Salinas and doing a community pool where that they would help with the construction and they would also have access to the pool for like summers? Did we do that?
So in the past, the city has come to us and has asked us to partner with them. But there were so many reasons, the reason why we did it, and they wanted us to take full liability for us to manage and run the pool from A to Z. Right, we normally right now, we're in the business of running and doing this for our kids. But if I can just maybe just share with you the conversation that we had on August 25. And I just really want to point out that if we don't work on these pools for North Salinas High School and Alisal High School, we are going to have to close the pools. So if we decide not to proceed with this projects under this project list and repair them with bond money, we're gonna have to make a commitment to close the pools.
Okay, I make a motion to approve item VVV.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. In the two items that were pulled, OOO and RRR. OOO, approved agreement with soft choice for the Microsoft renewal. And RR, approved Screen Connect license renewal for Information Technology Department. On pages 2 to 13 from item RRR are backed up in the item OOO.
So there was a clerical error here. What we did is pages 2 through 13 belong to item OOO. So if we could go ahead and take a motion with a correction for both of these items, that would be appreciated.
Can I have a, any discussion on that?
No.
Can you repeat that, Anna?
So, make a motion to pull OOO and RRR?
No, it's because.
So currently we're in all the backup. So we did the upload, the backup that's currently in RRR. Pages 2 through 13 belong to item OOO.
So right now, OOO is missing those backups, but they are attached inside of RR.
Nothing's changed, the price is still the same.
Everything's the same, exactly. It's just the attachment, I just want to make sure that we're transparent and that's documented.
Okay, can I have a motion for that?
Motion pending correction of those documents.
Thank you.
Can you give me the pages again for?
Pages 2 through 13.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Okay, now for all the rest of the consent items from A all the way P, P, P. Can I have a motion to approve those consent items?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Future agenda items.
Forgot one.
We have.
Going back to B?
Study session October 28th, and then our next regular board meeting would be the 18th of November.
The action item?
And now, after we adjourn, we're gonna go into closed session and discuss the superintendent's agreement. Can I motion to adjourn?
To close.
We're not adjourning her.
No.
Motion to go to close.
Okay, motion to go to closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll take 10 minutes, go into closed session.
I don't need to go.
Yeah.
Anthony has it all down, he knows exactly what it is.
But we don't need to. Right, no, we don't, don't need to be.
That's smart.
You might have one extension cord to one of your shoulders.
Yes, coming, thanks, Mom.
Carry it around all day long.
It's kind of short for me, but.
I want to get the ring cameras.
Okay. Let me go splatter some water.
Media noches.
Late boxes of food. Oh, there's a bunch of ensaladas over there too, no?
There's a bunch of ensaladas.
Oh, there's ensaladas. They were starving, poor guys, they found today. Tell them. Yeah, so watch them.
Is it turkey?
I have seen one of those, turkey sherry. Yeah.
Ms. Perez, I see you over there, you were, you were, you were starting to get a little heavy on that. Oh, really?
Mmm, that's good.
Hey, we have to bring in extra security, I see.
It's cold in here. They kicked it up, I think, to get us out. Oh, the doors are open, you see.
I'll buy one.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and, we come in open session, we are going to take a vote on number eight, action item B, approved superintendent's employment agreement. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
The approved superintendent's employment agreement. Do you guys want me to read out the terms and?
Again?
Again?
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed, we didn't make no changes, still the same.
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Future agenda items?
All right, now we go future agenda items, our next study session is the 20th of October, then we have November the 18th, it's a regular board meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No?
Thank you.
No.
Yeah, no, I like that.